All right, are we ready?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Tonight is Monday, January 13th, 2025, and this is a regular meeting of the Minnetonka City Council. I will call this meeting to order and ask you to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item is roll call, and Ms. Falk, would you please call roll?
Remaley?
Here.
Colkley?
Here.
Foster Bolton?
Here.
Shaq?
Here.
Wilburn?
Here.
Calvert?
Here.
Weersum?
Here. Next item is approval of the agenda, and I did not, is there an addenda tonight?
Yeah, thank you. Excuse me, can you hear me? Oh, thank you.
We can.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. There is an addenda for your consideration this evening. It is regarding item 10A, which is an ordinance amending City Code Section 710.005 regarding certain fees. This addendum outlines a council inquiry here recently where council inquired about options to improve restoration responses by utility companies. Staff has pulled together a memo outlining what that looks like, and so that is included in your addenda. With that, Mayor and Council, turn it back over to you for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Funk. Council, is there a motion? Councilmember Shaq.
Thank you, Mayor. I move approval of the agenda as amended.
And a second, Councilmember Calvert?
Second.
All right, we've got a motion by Councilmember Shaq and a second by Councilmember Calvert. Ms. Falk, please call roll.
Remaley?
Yes.
Colkley?
Yes.
Foster Bolton?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Weersum?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is approval of minutes, and we have one set of minutes. It is the December 2nd regular meeting minutes. Are there any comments or a motion? Anyone? Councilmember Foster Bolton?
I make a motion to approve the December 2nd, 2024 regular meeting minutes.
And is there a second? Councilmember Remaley?
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Foster Bolton and a second by Councilmember Remaley. Ms. Falk, please call roll.
Remaley?
Yes.
Colkley?
Yes.
Foster Bolton?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Weersum?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is special matters, and tonight we have two special matters. The first is the Boards and Commissions Report, and, you know, I want to thank, there's, we've got a good audience here tonight, and I want to thank all of our Board and Commission members for the hard work that they do and the time that they volunteer to the city. And the other thing that I want to comment on is all of your work as, like the council's work, is tied to our strategic plan, and that is really important. Our strategic plan is really our guide as to how we're going to conduct our business in the city. So with that, I want to thank you all for being here, and I want to turn it over to Mr. Funk, our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Weersum. Good evening again, City Council. As you know, Council Policy 1.2 requires that each of the council-appointed board committee or commission provide a written summary or written report to the City Council. In years past, normally that has been provided to the council on independent occasions. Normally, we might send that to you via our Friday updates or other mechanisms. This year, we took a little bit different approach to make it more comprehensive, and so this year, what you have included in your staff report is a information that compiles a look at 2024 highlights and looking ahead then at 2025 work plans. We do have here, as you pointed out, Mayor and Council, or Mayor, the representatives from our staff liaisons to each of these boards and commissions, along with the chair of each of those. We do have a short PowerPoint presentation for you to summarize what you have in your staff report, and we've teed it up as such that it'll start out, I believe, with the Charter Commission. That report was written by Corinne Heine, and so she will have an update on that. Next will be our diversity, equity, inclusion, and our chair will be Alisa Chen, along with Jace Alexander, a senior DI coordinator, who is the staff liaison. After that, we'll have our Economic Development Advisory Committee, led by Lee Jacobson, our chair, and Alicia Gray, our Economic Development and Housing Manager, followed by our Park Board, David Ingraham, and Kelly O'Dea as our rec director and also our staff liaison, followed by our Planning Commission, who you'll hear from Josh Sewell, our chair, as well as Susan Thomas, our city planner. Then we'll have our Senior Advisory Board. Our chair is Susan Moore and Kaylee Koonin, our Community Facilities Assistant Manager. And then last, our Sustainability Commission, who is Brian Golub, our chair, and Ellie Sutherland, our Sustainability Coordinator, and I believe you'll be meeting Ellie for the first time this evening, so we welcome her as well. So with that, Mayor and Council, I look forward to these presentations outlining this body of work. I would also note that there are 60 volunteers, as you alluded to, Mayor, that sit on our various boards and committees and commissions, and they do a significant role in working with the council, working with the city and the body of work, as noted with our strategic plan. So with that, Mayor and Council, I turn it over to you for presentation. Thank you.
Very good. So you're, so is this, so we've got, well, first of all, I will ask the, well, Ms. Heine, our city attorney will make this report, and our chair is John Northrup, and we meet as scheduled. Ms. Heine?
Mayor and members of the council, the Charter Commission is not subject to City Council Policy 1.2 because it is not appointed by, wasn't created by the City Council and is not appointed by the council, but we did include their annual report in the council packet for the council's information. They are required by law to report annually to the Chief Judge of the District Court. In this year, in November, their annual meeting is in November, they met and didn't have any action items on proposed ordinance amendments for adoption this year, but they did provide direction for a couple of matters that they would like to consider when they next meet in November of 2025. And one of those is a bylaw amendment that would change their annual meeting date from November to September. And a second one is to prepare a proposed ordinance that they would consider whether to recommend to the City Council, and that would establish the size of the commission at nine members. Currently, the Charter says, and this is consistent with state law, it can be anywhere between seven and 15 members. So that will be coming back next year.
Thank you, Ms. Heine. Appreciate it. Our next commission is the DEI Commission, and I will invite the chair and staff liaison, and that, the chair is Alisa Chen, welcome, and staff liaison is Jace Alexander, also welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good to be back with you all. So we're going to give you just a quick overview of the DEI Commission. Their job is to advise City Council concerning any project or issue. The City Council refers to the commission, so as we are a new council, something to keep in mind as things are coming across your desk, things that you might want to bounce off of us, please let us know. The commission can recommend to City Council initiatives, policies, or strategies to further the city's objectives of building an inclusive and equitable city and community for everyone, and the commission serves as an ambassador to the community and will participate, engage in community outreach and education on matters of diversity, equity, and inclusion. Thank you. All right, some of our work highlights from 2024. So as I said, we had our inaugural meeting, so it was really exciting to get this up and running. I know it's been in the works for a while, even before I started, and so we got that going. We appointed our chair and our vice chair. We are working on kind of creating a baseline so that the DEI commissioners know and understand what's going on in the city currently, so that they can make the best recommendations going forward, and we're not, you know, reinventing the wheel for things we already are doing. And so they also developed their 2025 work plan, and they were strategic about it and trying to align it with some of the strategic goals that we have in our overall profile, so that was great. And they all actively engaged in community volunteering at some of the events that we had this year, which we had a lot of inaugural events, and so they helped in the sensory rooms, and they were out chatting with folks at events, asking what they thought, how they felt engaged, and getting feedback and bringing that back, which was great. And something they're working on right now is furthering their outreach efforts with schools, and so we had myself and a couple commissioners meet with Superintendent Law, and we have it on the books to meet with Superintendent Reed to see how and when we can connect and help one another. Our work plan for 2025 is to continue to meet with city departments, so this month they're meeting with PD, and they'll come and talk about some of the things that they do and some of those initiatives, working on those equity efforts in education, going to continue to look at cultural festivals, workshops, panel discussions, and trying to assess like what's working and what's not. And again, creating that baseline will be helpful to do that. The ACE program, again, working with schools closely to see to try to up the number of applicants that we have so we can fully staff it each year, working on a community art program. So as you know, I know art's a big deal for you right now, which is very exciting, so we're hoping that by partnering with the schools, we can kind of figure out how to do that. We're going to host the Commissioner Forum this year. Last year, New Brighton held the first one where DEI or Human Rights Commissioners got together and got to kind of share ideas, and that was really cool, and so we're going to host this year. We're going to work on some barriers to access survey and Plan 2026, and kind of look at some GIS equity mapping for who's where in our city and how can we do targeted outreach for those specific communities, because everyone's not the same, right? So how do we engage with different folks? And then looking at transportation, busing, and accessibility for some of the events we have, how can we make sure people who want to get there, who maybe have some kind of barrier to transportation are still getting there? So lots of, lots of things we're working on.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander, and thank you, Ms. Chen. We really appreciate it, and we, I mentioned the strategic plan earlier, and our goal as a city is to be an inclusive and welcoming community, and the efforts in the work plan here reflects the fact that we don't want just most people to feel welcome and included. We want everyone to feel included, and so I appreciate the work that you're doing, and it's really important, so thank you so much.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Council.
All right. The next, next commission is the Economic Development Advisory Commission, an important commission. Lee Jacobson is chair and Alicia Gray is staff liaison, so welcome. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. The Economic Development of, Advisory Commission provides expertise and advice on all areas of economic development in the community. So this includes things like redevelopment, so the areas in the community that are being considered for redevelopment, and in terms of meeting comprehensive plan objectives and the city's housing goals. They also provide expertise and feedback on development finance requests, so this includes things such as tax increment financing, the HRA levy and budget, development account, livable communities account, all the various accounts that we, the city uses to fund our housing and economic development activities. Also, the city has approved very many housing programs over the years, so they provide the guidance on what those programs should look like and recommendations to the council on things like home buyer and home rehabilitation programs, homeless response, and a number of other housing programs. And then as well, transportation is included under this umbrella, so light rail and bus transit operations, which you'll hear about tonight, and other items related to transportation. So the 2024 work highlights, there was a project to construct a twin home at 5432 Roland Road. They provided their expertise and guidance on providing a grant to make that work happen, so there will be a twin home constructed later this year on that site. Also provided recommendation to fund Habitat for Humanity for the construction of 10 affordable twin homes in the community, and that project will also start later this year. Also, they provide yearly feedback on the, on the economic improvement program, so that is the, all of the city's economic development programs in one document, very similar to the CIP. They have influent, or they provide feedback on the budget and then also the HRA levy, and they also recommended the establishment of a housing improvement area, which is coming through the council tonight. For 2025, we'll continue the work on the economic improvement program, the recommendations for the budget and the levy. There will be a presentation on the business survey results, various affordable housing programs, and continued requests for financial assistance for redevelopment projects. They'll also receive feedbacks from staff on Metro Green Line extension and housing and business program updates.
I'll just add, I'm coming to the end of my seven-year term on the commission, and during that time, I've given, I've been able to give input on at least a dozen affordable housing programs or projects and a half dozen programs, and it's just been a great opportunity to see how the city works and how talented the city staff is, so it's been, I appreciate having the opportunity to serve. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Jacob, thank you for your seven years of service to the EDAC, and, and your expertise was very helpful, and your leadership is very much appreciated, and, you know, don't throw your phone away, because, you know, there might, there might be other opportunities, but thanks so much for your service. Really appreciate it.
Well, and I hope I get invited on the tours.
Very good. We can probably arrange that. All right. Next up is the Park Board, and the chair of the Park Board is Dave Ingraham. Our staff liaison is Kelly O'Dea, and the Park Board meets a lot, 12 times a year, so take it away.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Council. Appreciate it. Yes, the Park Board is an advisory commission to the City Council that meets monthly and really advises the council on related, park-related matters. So whether it's parkland, you know, park facilities and/or programming that occurs in the parks, that's all under their purview. A couple other things, they do assist with the short and long-term planning of the capital projects related to parks, so every year when we look at our five-year capital improvement plan, the Park Board sees the park-related pages and then forwards them on to you. And lastly, they review all the natural resources initiatives and the recreation programming that occurs within our parks. So the Park Board is a very busy commission that, again, meets on a monthly basis, and I'll have Mr. Ingraham go over the next two slides.
Yeah, recapping the 2024 highlights, significant effort was around the Purgatory Park Master Plan, which was the first master plan we undertook for the, our major parks. As we do each year, there was a lot of reviewing, discussing about parks and trail projects supported in the capital improvement plan. Based on resident input and requests, we reviewed adding pickleball lines at Oberlin Park Tennis Courts. As, as you're aware from prior discussions, there's a lot of discussion around the dog park signage within Purgatory and ordinances regarding animals in parks. We also reviewed and discussed the ordinance regarding cannabis in the public spaces and reviewed park habitat restoration in several parks, including Meadow Orchard and Lake Rose. Our 2025 work plan continues to include a lot of efforts around our natural resources. There's going to be major efforts in Big Willow, Jedana, and Green Circle Parks, and we also review, as we do annually, the education outreach from the National Resources, Natural Resources Division. Other important projects remain, this year, three master plans, Cullen Nature Preserve, Meadow Park, and Big Willow Park. We also will be involved in reviewing the Offly Stoggs area, recommendations, as well as to review and approve a concept around the Glen Lakes Gate Park. You may recall that from prior years. And then news to me, but I'm excited to hear this, we'll be reviewing preliminary concepts for a new park in the Opas area. And then obviously, we continue to do the capital improvement projects reviews. Thank you.
Well, thank you both for being here tonight, and all of us council members know how much our residents appreciate our outstanding park system, and I've been doing this for a while, and I remember when we went through the, the park revitalization, you know, 20 years ago, and our parks have been in great shape since then, and we really put a lot of effort there and spent a lot of money, but it's very consistent with our strategic plan and the values of our residents, so thanks so much for your hard work. And next is the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission does, gets very involved with development, and our chair is Josh Sewell, and our staff liaison is Susan Thomas, and they meet 26 times a year. At least schedule that. Every once in a while, they get a break and a meeting is canceled, but they do a lot of the heavy lifting in our, in the city, so Josh, welcome.
Thank you. We in the Planning Commission would dream of 12 meetings a year.
Can I say 12? I meant 26 scheduled meetings per year.
We wish we had 12.
Okay, that's right. We're not, we're not going to suggest that other boards of commissioners are slackers, but we do know that you do a lot of heavy lifting, so thank you.
Mayor and Councilmembers, the Planning Commission, as you said, reviews land use and development proposals and serves really as the primary forum for public input into those proposals. And during its review, the Planning Commission attempts to resolve issues or concerns regarding the proposal, excuse me, regarding the proposals, performing sometimes a difficult balancing act, as Chair Sewell says at the beginning of every meeting, trying to balance individual rights and community responsibilities. As you know, the commission makes final decisions on some development proposals and then on others, provides to the council a clear and definitive recommendation. 2024 was a busy year for the Planning Commission. They reviewed over 80 applications during 19 meetings, and those meetings totaled over 40 hours, so one full work week that the commission sat at that dais. That doesn't include the time that commissioners spend reviewing the packet materials and visiting the sites. Some highlights have included redevelopment of some large sites, the Mills Church, the Hillcrest Nursing Home Site, and Ridgedale Wells Fargo. Two of those projects are currently coming up out of the ground as we speak. They reviewed several subdivision projects totaling 20 new lots and three concept plans, two for rental townhomes, and then one for dementia care. Unlike some of the other bodies you're hearing from tonight, the Planning Commission doesn't set its own work plan, it's essentially set for it by the applicants. They're legally obligated to hear whatever applications come to the city, so what 2025 holds, I guess we'll see. Certainly, it will have some opportunities throughout the year and the coming years for planning commissioners to be involved in the zoning review and the zoning update. So as I do at every Planning Commission meeting, I will say I'm turning it over to Chair Sewell.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. So I come here tonight with two messages. First and probably most importantly is just thank you. Thank you to the staff. You do such an excellent job. I've been on the commission now almost eight years, and you've done a fantastic job. Every single staff member I've ever worked with has been nothing but professional and easy to work with, and I can't say enough good things about the staff, so thank you. Also, thank you to the mayor and council. As Ms. Thomas talked about, we had some challenging items in 2024. Whether you agreed with us, disagreed, it doesn't matter. We always felt the support of the council and of staff, and that made such a big difference to me personally and also to the commissioners. As this year, we've had to start to deal with some outside organizations coming in and people trying to use the Planning Commission as a public forum for other, other issues, and that was challenging for us, both as a body and personally as well, so thank you for your support. It meant a lot. Second thing, and finally, it's just a request, like we joked about in the beginning, it is quite, quite a big commitment to be on the Planning Commission. A lot of time involved, it's wonderful, but it's a big commitment for not only us, but also our families as well, and so attendance can be a challenge. So I challenge you to work with staff to find ways to help lessen that burden a little bit on the Planning Commission, because not everybody has this, thankfully, the scheduling, loving spouse that I do that's helped me make this happen, but it is, it is challenging. So work with staff and see if you can find ways to help mitigate some of that. They've got great ideas, and I know Ms. Thomas does, and I was working with Lauren before he left as well on some ideas, so think about some of those things, too. And just ways to recognize, because again, it is a big commitment, and these are a volunteer, volunteer board, and it does take a lot, a lot of time, especially if you do it for eight years. I don't want to count how many hours I've spent, but I could get that second job if I was wanted, so either way, I just want to say thank you for everything, and it's been a great eight years, so I just want to say thank you to all involved, so.
Chair Sewell, hang on a second. I think Councilmember Shaq wants to say something, and I have a quick comment, too.
Thank you, Mayor. I just feel particularly compelled to thank Josh. Josh and I had our first meeting with the city together on the same day, and so I consider him my buddy, and I miss having him on the Planning Commission. He's done a lot of really good work, and I always love catching up with him on the tour, so don't be a stranger, Josh. Thank you so much.
It's my favorite meeting every year, is going on the tour, so.
Awesome. And I, and, well, go ahead, Deb, or Councilmember Calvert, excuse me.
I will make it very brief. I, too, served on the Planning Commission with both of these wonderful people, and I also serve on the EDAC, and I just want to express my appreciation to all of the people that serve on our board and commissions. I found it very gratifying and edifying. I learned so much, and I will take your suggestion to heart, but I just want to thank you, and Josh lives around the corner from me, so I know where to find him. You're not going to get away that easy, so thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Councilmember Calvert. Anyone else? I just want to add, yeah, it's hard to believe that eight years has gone by, and I was going to tell you, well, you know, when you started on the Planning Commission, you were just a young guy, and I look at you now, and I think you're still just a young guy, but, but anyway, so it apparently didn't stress you out too much, but, but this is really a comment, not just for our planning commissioners, but for all of the members of our boards and commissions. Nobody gets paid for those jobs. Everyone is a volunteer, and the jobs are not always easy. I've sat through some public hearings, and I've watched some public hearings, and, and people, people, all the people in this room, I believe, love our city, as we all do, but when you love something, you get emotional about it, and sometimes you even are not always objective about it, and when people are concerned about something changing in their community, they get very emotional, and it's challenging to lead those meetings and hold those meetings, and these are volunteers. They're here for the same reason you are. They love their city, and so I want to, I can't thank you enough for the good work you've done, and also, I want you to know how much I appreciate how difficult sometimes the position we've asked you to hold is, but I want to thank you for your service, because I'm really proud of all of you and this city and all the work you've done, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
So next, we have the Senior Advisory Board, and our chair is Susan Moore, and our staff liaison is Kayla, Kaylee, oops, Kaylee Koonin. I didn't mean to do that to this chair. Excuse me. And so, welcome, and please make your report.
Yes, thank you for having us, council, council members and mayor. Like you said, I'm Kaylee. I'm the city liaison. The Senior Advisory Board advises the council on needs and the status of seniors in our city, recommending ways in which those needs may be met. We determine and assess existing resources in the city which may be utilized by seniors to meet their needs, and we evaluate and assess proposed programs, grants, and other governmental activities that may impact seniors, and then we recommend policies, goals, and objectives for operation of Minnetonka senior services.
And some of the highlights from 2024 were the annual book and pie sale, and it was a huge success. a huge success. Thank you. With over 3,000 books sold, we were present throughout the entire event, and we did the organizing of the books, helping cashier and assisting in the kitchen. $4,463 was raised for the scholarship fund. And we've also hosted a senior housing fair, and we, I think this was our second, wasn't it? And it was a great success. We had a number of different housing options and home service vendors that were represented and volunteered for the day of the event. And we had about 300 participants that came.
These events would not be successful without the help of the Senior Advisory Board. So we're very grateful that they volunteer their time, not only for meetings, but also for these events. And then going forward, in 2025, we continue to do the work that we have been doing, supporting the mission of the city's senior population and issues that impact residents 55 and older. We focus on identifying and addressing the evolving wants and needs, particularly in areas of social engagement and the ever-changing technology advancements, intergenerational programming, and wellness programming. We'll collaborate with city staff and various organizations to make sure that these events and programs happen. We'll evaluate the effectiveness of current programs while also reviewing proposed programs and fundraising opportunities that may influence the senior population. We'll continue recommending policies and programs for Minnetonka senior services that align with the community's needs. Through these efforts, we seek to strengthen the city's commitment to creating an age-friendly community that promotes dignity, independence, and a high quality of life for senior residents. Thank you.
Well, thank.
And there's still time to sign up for Parking Lot Bingo on Friday.
All right. And Parking Lot Bingo is really good. So I'd encourage anyone who wants to go to go. I've even been the bingo caller on one or two occasions.
You have, yes.
And I just want to thank our Senior Advisory Board. You know, I spent a bit of time at City Hall, and the seniors are always here. And they're working out, and I think, well, I ought to be down there working out, too. But there's just a lot of great programs, and I would encourage people to check the bulletin board and show up. And some of them have a nominal fee, some of them are free. But this is a great, I mean, the surgeon general talked about loneliness in our society. And, you know, particularly as you get older, you can get lonelier. But if you hang out here, you won't. I promise you that. So it's a great service to our entire community. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, the Sustainability Commission. Last but not least, or maybe not last, I don't know.
No, we are.
Okay, well, and this is our second newest commission. And our chair is Brian Gollub, and our staff liaison is Ally Sutherland. Welcome to you both. And as we consider the California fires, maybe this whole issue of sustainability is something that we should be concerned about. Thank you for being here tonight.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, council members. Ally Sutherland, Sustainability Coordinator, newly hired, been here about a month. So thank you for having me. Very excited to be in this position. I was previously at the city of Inver Grove Heights for seven years as a very similar position, and so very excited to hit the ground running. Everyone here has been extremely welcoming and just very excited to be onboarded. So thank you. I'm here with our chair, Brian Gollub, representing the Sustainability Commission. I'll be the staff liaison going forward. So the Sustainability Commission's duties are defined by city code. I look at it as there's two different sets of duties. One is to review, research, evaluate, and develop programs and policies for the city council to consider. Those duties are focused on climate change mitigation, sustainable use and management of environmental resources, which includes air, water, energy, land, and ecological resources. The code also speaks to recycling and landfill waste as an area of topics. And then also, any sustainability area that's not addressed by city code that may arise throughout the year of as a priority interest or topic. And then any other area that maybe a city advisory group does not cover within the sustainability realm. The other portion of their duties are to be that community ambassador for sustainability programs. And just my short time here, I've noticed that they're an extremely positive and energetic and passionate group of volunteers. So very excited to be able to work with them at community events. Their role is really just to be cultivating community relationships, and that means for both residents and businesses, but just fostering those relationships with the city. And then also, leading community engagement with staff, and then just acting as a liaison for the council by talking to those residents and businesses about these topics. So going into the work plan, you may recall that the Sustainability Commission is required to develop a work plan for the year. So that's why this gets a little bit more detailed. That was included in the packet tonight. We have updates on the 2024 work plan, and then we also included the draft 25 work plan for you to review and approve tonight. Just some highlights, the significant efforts are the first two bullets. That was to recognize five 2023 Sustainable Award, or Minnetonka Award winners. Those are both residents and businesses who have demonstrated notable sustainability achievements, whether it's in their own home or businesses. But we just want to recognize them as models for the community, examples of what others can learn from. So we're continuing that program and are awarding those each year. And then the second bullet is about the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan that you may recall. The Sustainability Commission took on a significant effort to host stakeholder engagement meetings with the city, the consultants, the community, as well as city council was also a part of that process. I just wanted to note that there were three pop-up events, three focus group meetings, one public house, an online survey, and over 850 respondents participated in that development of that plan. So it was a very large undertaking for the commission and continues to be going forward here with implementation. You'll see other items in the work plan are related to outreach on energy topics, energy efficiency, renewable energy, energy reduction, those sorts of topics. And then also, waste abatement topics. You'll see outreach and also collection events, such as the first reuse swap was hosted this year. Picture down below of the clothing that we collected. There were 780 pounds of clothing collected for reuse in the community. And then also, we hosted two building reuse, or building material reuse collections at the special community drop-off days, which is a pretty outstanding accomplishment. So 4,820 pounds of items were reused through that. And then lastly, just under $50,000 was received from the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency to provide 480 free home energy audits to residents with the assistance of the city as well. So that's a pretty exciting accomplishment, too. So going forward, we'll be continuing a lot of those same outreach opportunities. The focus will be continuing to grow the Sustainable Minnetonka Award Program, spread the word a little bit more, and then also to dive into implementation of the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. I will say, and Brian would probably agree, that that's probably where a majority of our focus will be. But as you see in your packets, there's a pretty extensive work plan as well, continuing those business-as-usual items. And then just wanted to highlight, I have a couple screenshots of what the Climate Action Plan looks like. If you recall, just a reminder, there's actions that residents can take in it. There's a checklist for businesses, actions that they can take. So if they open this document, they can see exactly what they can do, how to do it, and then the impact that it'll make. And then there's also a list for the municipality. And it includes 50 complex actions that the city can take, actually, that is dedicated to take by 2030. So we're going to hit the ground running on that, and I'm super excited to be a part of that. So with that, I will hand it over to Chair Gollum to see if he has anything else to say.
Thank you, Ally. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you very much for the ability or the opportunity to present tonight. I think I can speak for everyone, and I don't have a PowerPoint, but I can speak for everyone on the Sustainability Commission, as we're proud to serve, as Ally pointed out, as an advisor to the city council and as an ambassador to all Minnetonka residents and others outside of our city. As you all know, we develop a detailed work plan reflecting the actions the Sustainability Commission intends to accomplish the following year. We usually do that in November, and it's presented to you guys. It serves as our roadmap, but does not prevent us from making changes that we think are important during the course of the year. As Ally pointed out in her comments, the Sustainability Commission has accomplished a lot of important work during the past three and a half years. Our first meeting was on May of 2021, which is hard to believe, a long time ago. And we're very proud of our Sustainable Minnetonka Awards Program, which we're continuing, as Ally pointed out, this coming year, this year, I should say. And we're also continuing to implement our Climate Action Adaptation Plan, which is extremely important to all of us. As the mayor pointed out, the climate is changing. There's no doubt. In 2025, the Sustainability Commission looks forward to growing and continuing our existing programs and your resolute support of our activities. So we want to thank you very much for your support.
Well, thank you so much. Just a quick comment. You know, I commented on the California wildfires, and clearly, our climate is changing. And I would just like to encourage anyone in this room and all Minnetonka residents, if, look at the Climate Action Plan. Pick one or two or three things that you can do. There are simple things, there are difficult things. We all need, we all have a role in this effort. And, you know, resolved, it's a little, you know, it's still early enough. It's January. We can do New Year's resolutions. Let's pick one or two or three things, or more, from the Climate Action Plan and implement them in our lives that will make a difference. Thank you so much for your work.
Thank you.
Councilmember Calvert.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to make this brief. I talked to Mr. Funk earlier. I just want to thank this commission for the heavy lift that you did here, getting the commission up and running, picking really great areas of focus. And I was encouraged to say some of the things that came to mind, not to add to your list, but I had some thoughts. So these are not things I expect to happen overnight, but I wanted to thank you for your focus on encouraging multifamily recycling and organics use. It's hard for them to do it, but there are a lot of people in those buildings that want to do the right thing. And, you know, I'd love to crack that nut. And to the mayor's point about the fires, you know, it's been an exceptionally dry winter here. We are likely to be in a drought here. And when you're in a water-rich area that starts having droughts, it's very concerning. So everything we can do about, you know, water conservation, education. The other thing that I was thinking is, I have a wonderful husband who was wildland firefighter for 40 years, 20 years in California, and he's a wish cycler. And he thinks everything can be recycled. And I think all of the education that we can do to help people understand what you can recycle, what you can't recycle, what is recycling, and what is composting. It's still really hard for people to understand. So and then, this was the thing that I really, I love the Green Team idea. I just think that's great, connecting people with even existing groups like Friends of Minnetonka Parks, and just the Green Team idea was great. But I also started thinking, we had a pretty robust plastic bag and plastic film recycling initiative, and we are about to hear a presentation on transit. And one of the things that people commented on in surveys about transit and that I've noticed is, there's no place for people to sit or even stand at a lot of bus stops. And one of the things that we did with the plastic film was make benches. There was some program where we, those, you know, and if we could find a way to partner with Metro Transit to recycle their bags and turn them into benches that people could sit at, at bus stops, I think that would be a win-win. So just not for this year, but anyway, just for the record, it'll go, it'll go in the record. Because you have more than enough to do for a long time.
Thank you, Councilmember Calvert. And I think, Councilmember Wilburn, do you have a comment?
Yes, I'll save, like, most of my comments for a study session or another time. But I will just mention one thing. I was talking to Mr. Funk about how I'd like to see more opportunities for cooperation between some of our boards and commissions. And I noticed for the DEI, GIS mapping is one of their goals. And I just, this morning, was using a tool from the EPA, the EPA's Environmental Justice Screening and Mapping Tool. And I thought that would be like an excellent opportunity for both sustainability and DEI to do some mapping and work. So that's my one suggestion.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilburn, and Councilmember Romaili.
Thank you, Mayor. I also spoke with Mr. Funk this morning regarding feedback on this. And I think probably, like a lot of us, we have several points. And then rather than kind of belabor them now, I'm hoping that we have the opportunity to send them to city manager for distribution to our boards and commissions, and perhaps can follow up with those separately.
Thank you, Councilwoman Romaili. All right. Boards and commissioners, sorry you had to stand up there for all this, but it was all good. But just to all of our board and commission members and their staff liaisons, the work you do is important. You really influence the decisions that the city council makes, and we really appreciate your work. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. So that was for, or do we have to take any action on that?
Yes.
Excuse me. So where does it say the action we're supposed to take?
Usually on the next slide, except if the next slide is not there.
Here we are. Okay, receive the report.
It would be the DEI and the Sustainability Commission work plans.
Okay, we have to approve, excuse me, I'm sorry. So we do have to approve the Sustainability Commission and the DEI work plans. So is there a motion, Councilmember Wilburn?
I move approval of the Sustainability and DEI Commission work plans.
Is there a second? Councilmember Calvert.
Excuse me, I'll second.
All right. We've got a motion by Councilmember Wilburn and a second by Councilmember Calvert. Ms. Falk, please call Rome.
Romaili?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
Foster-Bolton?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Weirson?
Yes, motion carries. The next item, Ms. Wishnak, am I good now? Okay, good, thank you. The second special matter, item 6B, is the Transit Study Presentation. And I believe Mr. Funk, you, and Ms. Wishnak are in a tag team, and then we have other participants. So Mr. Funk.
Thank you, Mayor, Weirson, and council. I'll just quickly introduce the subject here this evening, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Wishnak. Just regarding the agenda item before you, I find this personally exciting, and I think hopefully you will as well. It's been a few years since the council has really taken a look at our transit here in Minnetonka, especially with the impact on patterns and services changing throughout the pandemic and now post-pandemic, and also considering Metro Transit's proposed changes via the new Network Now. City Minnetonka recently hired Nelson Nygaard to analyze transit services here in Minnetonka. They're not unfamiliar to us, and I say "they" being Nelson Nygaard, has a historical context with Minnetonka's transit trends, as they conducted a similar study back in 2013. So it's been about 10 years since we've really taken a deeper dive into the transit services, what that looks like, the bus routes, and that's all contained in the upcoming report. And so look forward to the presentation coming up. And really, the goal here tonight is to assess the value of these transit services in order to make informed decisions for you, council, about the future of transit services provided here in the city. And so tonight, at the conclusion of the report, we do have action to receive the report and provide feedback to staff. And really, depending on the conversation and the discussion later, this item could be considered later this year for a larger conversation at a study session. So it's exciting work. Hopefully, there's a lot of data in the report, a lot of data that will be covered here in the next 20 minutes or so by our consultants. And then we'll start a conversation on really analyzing that data and then some potential next steps. So with that, Mayor Weirson and council, turn it over to Ms. Wishnak for further introduction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Funk. Ms. Wishnak.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. I think the city manager covered most of what I have on this side. But it, and I think this is a confusing part to the public, so I want to just go over this quickly. It's a little bit different in Minnetonka with transit. And so Minnetonka had special legislation in 2002, and what we're called is an opt-out city. And what that means is, we're able, as a city, to decide
And what that means is we're able, as a city, to decide who we want to provide our transit services. But we opt in, meaning we contract with Metro Transit as our provider. And so it's a little bit confusing, but we still maintain that authority and that ability under state law. I always start there because some of the analysis does talk about other providers, a combo, hybrid, all of those sorts of options. And so I think if you don't have that basic understanding from the beginning, you might get lost as we go forward and talk about our study. As the city manager said, we had done a transit study a while back. That doesn't mean we haven't been monitoring things, however. So every quarter, staff meets with Metro Transit, we talk about issues, ridership, we talk about park and rides, we talk about a variety of transit issues. And if there's changes in services, that's where we hear about those proposals, et cetera. So in 2024, it's really that value question, are we getting the value out of the dollars and cents that are committed for transit purposes specifically to Minnetoka? So we take it out of the regional context and try to pull it down to the city level and give you that information. And what's interesting about this study is the same person who did our study in 2013, Mr. Ludi from Nelson Nygaard, is still with us. And so he's going to do the majority of this report. I'll come back at the end, I'll tell you about the next step. So I'd like to invite him up to the podium, and feel free to run your own slides, Paul.
Okay.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, and councilmembers. I'm gonna, not gonna walk you through the entire report, so I've got a summary. I'm gonna go through these slides relatively fast, happy to answer some questions as we go through this.
And Paul, before you start, can you just raise the podium just a hair? It's for our recording. That's perfect, thank you.
So, I wanted to give you a quick overview of the study. The first, really, as Julie mentioned, I think the primary goal was really to assess the value of transit here in Minnetoka, but also to help the city make informed decisions. We're not necessarily making recommendations about what you should or should not do, but giving you information and updating that information for what we did in 2012. And I was standing here in 2012. I think things have changed a little bit, at least in terms of the technology. But in terms of the overview and the study, we really focused first on existing conditions. So what is new, what's, how is, how is the service performing? Also, we wanted to look at travel patterns, that was an important thing that we did. So how are people traveling right now, not just on transit, but in general? And we focused on a couple of different areas that I'll talk about in just a second. We also did a peer review, so we wanted to look at some of your local peers, as well as some national peers across the country, and what are they doing in terms of transit service? And then finally, we talk about, we've got some recommendations and, or some considerations, I should say, about how service is delivered and some of the improvements that are included in the Network Now plan. So, the existing additions review, this is really where we did our market and demographic analysis and seeing some of the DEI GIS mapping, we did some of the similar kind of thing. So where we focused on those parts of the community that we know are more likely to use transit. We also looked at some travel patterns. So we wanted to understand how are people traveling within the city, but also isolating different parts of the city, and how are they traveling regionally? Now, we did use cellphone data to understand how people are getting around. So this is not just transit trips, these are all trips. But it's really informative as we start to think about some of the transit services here. People travel, they, they need to go where they need to go. And so having direct service there is really important. We also did a review of the Green Line extension, so there's a few, a review of the station, there's one station in Minnetoka and two that are very close. We looked at park and ride utilization, which has plummeted since the pandemic. We also looked at some of the other services, Transit Link, Metro Mobility, I've got a slide on that. And then we looked at the community survey, we looked at the visitor data and business survey, and kind of tried to focus in on what are they saying specific to transit? So you have sort of a layered effect of transit services here in Minnetoka. The, the Metro Transit bus service is kind of the core of the transit service provided in the city. The map on this slide shows the routes that are operated in the city, as well as ridership, so average weekday ridership. So the bigger the bubble, that means more ridership. You've got four local express all-day services, so the 9, the 612, 615 are your kind of local routes. And then you've got an all-day express, the 645 that runs in the 394 corridor. You've also got two express services that run just during peak hours, just on weekdays, so the 667, 673. Layered on top of the hour under it, I suppose, is Metro Mobility, which is the ADA accessible service for those who are unable to use the regular bus service. There's the park and ride lot, so you've got two large, bigger ones, really the big one at 394 and County Road 73. And then you've got Transit Link, which is an on-demand shared ride service that connects to different transit hubs. That kind of fills in the gaps where there is not regular bus service. So it doesn't just run in Minnetoka, there's Transit Link throughout the Twin Cities. We also did kind of a local and a national peer review. So the local peer review I'll talk about first. So we looked at five other cities that are of similar size, similar population, land use. We wanted to try to understand, what is the service provided here in Minnetoka? How does that compare to some of your peer communities? So we looked at Plymouth, Maple Grove, Blaine, Eden Prairie, and Woodbury. And within those, if you can see on this map, there's kind of a gradation of green. Those are market areas that are identified in the Met Council's Transit Planning Policy Plan, which basically says, within those different areas of the region, these are the types of service that are likely to be successful, types of transit services. So, we also looked, not just within the city limits of your peers, but also within those market areas. So, I'm not going to get into all of the detail, but you'll see some of the slide, the next slide actually shows some difference between those market areas. But I think the key point here with the, with the local peer review is that the services provided right now in Minnetoka tend to be spread out throughout the week, whereas some of your peers, like Maple Grove, Plymouth, Eden Prairie, they're very much peak-oriented weekday service. So even during the midday, there's much less service. So it's really focused on getting people from those communities and into like major job centers, downtown Minneapolis, the U of M. We also did look at the national peer review, so we wanted to kind of understand, we did this in 2012, too. So we brought back the same peers, and we wanted to see, how has it changed? What have they done since the pandemic? And I will say that, you know, ridership nationally and transit use nationally really started to decline, not just after the pandemic, but really in like 2014. That's when things started to go down. It's happened here in the Twin Cities. It's also, it's a very much a national phenomenon. So we wanted to see, okay, well, what are these other peers doing in terms of their service? And what we found, basically, was they're running mostly a local service that connects to their region. They're not necessarily running a lot of express service. Some of them are, and they have some service, but they're kind of complementing larger regional connections, even to rail or to like park and rides. So we dug into this just a little bit more, and we wanted to understand, okay, so among your local peers, like I said, we wanted to say how much service is provided, and where is that service provided within the city? So this is kind of a fancy map, actually, I really like this map, but, but I like, that's why I did that, that's why I do what I do, because I like maps. But some of the key findings within this analysis really is that Minnetoka is receiving a similar level of service and geographic coverage than your peers. And I say that with the caveat that there's different service areas here. So the light green on this map tends to be areas that are not going to support regular bus fixed route kind of service. So when we look at that, it's really, yeah, so Minnetoka is receiving a similar level across these geographic areas. So I think that's really important. Minnetoka's service levels are also more even throughout the day, so you're not peak, sorry, not peak-oriented. So some of your peers, Plymouth, Maple Grove, and Eden Prairie in particular, do have that service model. The other thing that's interesting, I think, about Minnetoka is that you have this mix. You have local service and you have express service. So it's not like one or the other. And that's pretty typical of what Blaine has and what Woodbury has. It's typical of a more connected regional network. And with Metro Transit providing that service, that makes sense, because they're, they're connecting you back into the region. The other caveat is that even though there's less service in some of the peers on the weekends and during midday and off-peak periods, they do run sort of like a micro-transit service, which is kind of like an Uber or Lyft, if you're not familiar with it, it's like Uber Lyft, like a shared ride service where you would book that trip on your, on a phone, on an app. So, they do have those services within their communities. That is also proposed as part of the Network Now for Minnetoka. So we'll talk about that in just a minute, but I wanted to make that caveat. As we did this, we were really just kind of looking at the regular bus service. So there is this other layer of on-demand in some of those peers. Okay, so we also did a financial review. And I will say that this is really mostly a summary of the existing sources of funding. This is not an assessment of whether or not you can access those funds. So transit funding is extremely complex, it fluctuates from year to year, this is not just here, it's nationally. And they tend to be different sources of funds. So in this case, in the Twin Cities, you have kind of four kind of major sources of funding. The first being the motor vehicle sales tax. This makes up about 60% of Metro Transit's regular operating revenue. You also have fares, of course, but fares are not, you know, transit is very much a subsidized service, it's very much seen as a public service. So fares do not cover a ton of the total cost to run service, about 10% in the Twin Cities. Or I should say for Metro Transit, 10%, 10%. And, but then there's a couple of other different funding sources. There's the regenable, regional transportation sales and use tax. This is a relatively new source of funding, it's a retail tax. I don't know the, what amount would be generated in Minnetoka, but I can say there's an estimate that was made for fiscal year '25 in Hennepin County, which is about, which is a relatively small amount, it's a large amount here. But if you think about the total amount of transit funding, it's relatively small for the, for the entire transit system. And then the last major piece of funding is federal funds. So that comes from the federal government, there has to be a recipient of those funds, in this case, it's the Met Council. And I will say, Minnetoka would not have direct access to those funds, and neither do the peers that we looked at, though there are some sub-recipient grant agreements that allow some of those funds to flow back to the suburban transit operators. I wanted to spend just a little bit of time on the Network Now changes and highlight some of the things that are included here, because I think there's, there's actually quite a lot of service improvements. And, so, on the local side, and I know you're not going to be able to make sense of these maps, but on the local side, it's basically kind of filling in the gaps. And one thing that transit has, the change since COVID, I will say, in the transit industry and here in Minnetoka and the Twin Cities as well, is that those peak-oriented services have really flattened out. And what has filled those gaps are, you know, weekend service and midday service. So what Network Now is doing, and it's really kind of focusing on a number of things, but they're, they're looking at, coming out of the pandemic, how do we not just put service back, but let's think about what's the best way to put those back? So, what they, what they're suggesting here is midday frequency on Route 9, increasing that from every hour to every 30 minutes. Better frequency to the Opus area on the fixed route that serves that area, and connecting it to a route that provides better service into Minneapolis without having to transfer. So that's, I think, an important improvement. They're bringing Sunday service to Route 615, which currently does not run on Saturday, so that's another local improvement. There's a metro microzone, so Metro Transit runs one metro microzone in North Minneapolis right now. So it's similar to that. Getting into the details of it is basically an Uber Lyft, but it's a shared ride, and you would, yeah, similar to, yeah, as I mentioned earlier. And then, of course, the Green Line, with an anticipated opening in 2027. So those are kind of the major local highlights. The, there's also some improvements in the commuter service, and one of the things that they're suggesting is bringing the, kind of reorienting the express service into what they're calling a key express network. So the map in the bottom right-hand corner shows that, and the County Road 73 and 394 park and ride, that would kind of be one of the terminuses of one of those key express networks. So 673, which is your, one of those express routes, would increase frequency, so that's one of the recommendations. Also restoring service directly to the U of M. There is one kind of local change, I would say, that relates to the commuter express service, which is that they're suggesting that service on County Road 101 not, be taken away, and rather extended to Excelsior. So we'll talk about that in just a minute. So what we did is we said, okay, there's all of these things that we've learned from the study, there's the Network Now plan, what are some considerations as, as to give to the city to think about, you know, does this, do these make sense? And I think a lot of them do, actually. So what we're, what we're basically saying here is we've got four major recommendations. The first is to be really clear about what the metro microservice is and what it does. And I know that that will be part of the process, but we just wanted to sort of reemphasize that, because the micro-transit service here, I think, is filling in those gaps of where regular fixed route bus is not really going to be all that successful. So it's a really important part of the consideration, of the improvement package, so really clearly defining what those are. The second one is we said, you know, consider a crosstown connection, because as we looked at travel patterns, the 394 area around Ridgedale, as well as like downtown Hopkins and even to the Opus area, there's connection there. And so, consider some way of doing that, whether it's a regular bus route or with, through this metro micro, it's important to be able to make that connection. I mentioned the County Road 101 service, we're saying, we're suggesting that, you know, consider maintaining some level of service. There is a, there's a pretty large apartment complex there, there's, you know, there's other reasons for that to be there, and so we're suggesting, you know, at least consider bringing some service back. And then the other one is really just kind of supporting that key express network and making sure that there are good connections to that service, because the key express network is very frequent service, connecting major destinations, but you've got to be able to get there. So I think that relates to the metro microservice as well. The final piece of this is what we're calling kind of service delivery options. And as Julie mentioned, there's a number of different ways that you could provide service here. Obviously, the first one is to continue the agreement with the Met Council, but there are other options. So what we did is we basically said, you know, like any decision, it's not clear-cut, and there's pros and cons. And so we came up with a number of criteria, basically, that we said, you know, in terms of, regional connectivity was one of them, local service needs, so, okay, let me walk through those, because regional connectivity is important. How well would the, would the service be connected with these different options, if you were to choose something different? How well would your local service needs be met? How cost-effective would this be? Would there be changes in, would it go up or would it go down, do we think? We didn't do a, you know, detailed financial analysis, but just rather, sort of a qualitative assessment of, is this going to be better, is it going to be more, is it going to be less? We also really think about things from a customer standpoint. So if you were to change who was operating the service, what's the impact on the customer? And so we had kind of, you know, thought about that, what are the pros and cons associated with it? Staff also would have to, you know, change. If, if there were a different provider, staff would have to do this, the council would have to do this. You'd have, there'd be some administrative burden in terms of taking on a different, taking a different direction. And then finally, you know, facility needs and ownership, that's just something that needs to be thought about. Where would buses be stored, and all those kinds of things? So, again, we're not making recommendations, what we wanted to do is to say that there's pros and cons. And so we basically went through the different options to you. One would be to negotiate a new agreement. the different options to you. One would be to negotiate a new agreement with one of the suburban transit providers. That just is like the closest, you know, you're probably your two closest would be Southwest Transit or Plymouth, just because of proximity. It makes sense. So the that would be one option. Another one would be to become a new transit provider. And then finally, you could sort of blend those, we think. It could be an option where some of the sort of regional connectivity is still in place, especially with local connections to some of the inner suburbs like St. Louis Park, or Hopkins even, and but then also have some of those regional connections provided. So we went through here. I would I will say on this, like I said, we didn't really make a recommendation, but I think there's probably more cons associated with becoming your own transit provider. It's complicated. There's funding involved. There's vehicles. There's storage, the whole all the things. So so this is kind of where we left the study. I think there's a wrap-up slide. Julie's gonna-
Yeah, I'll thank you, Paul. And that's really just a quick synopsis. So I can't remember how long the report is, Paul, but it's lengthy.
Not as long as the the other one, I will say.
So if people want to dive in more, if they're listening to this at home, there's lots of statistics in the report and and information about ridership and that sort of thing. So I'd encourage people who are interested, go take a look at the actual report. You know, we will continue to work under this current agreement that we have with Metro Transit. We want to talk about the service considerations that we found in the report. Also during the Economic Improvement Program discussion, transit is a part of that discussion. So look forward to continued conversations in that process. We also have to renegotiate our contract by July 31 of this year. And so there is some work to do if there are changes anticipated. And so if there's not changes, then perhaps some other language additions that you might want to consider might come up, that sort of thing. And really maybe use some of this interim time to talk to other providers. We do meet with Southwest regularly, not Plymouth as much, and some of the other transit providers that Paul mentioned in his presentation. So for tonight, Mayor, really back to you in terms of we're asking you to accept this report that was presented and provide feedback on the report. And then in the interim, staff will continue those conversations about the cooperative agreement with Metro Transit and bring that back to you in a timely fashion. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, thank you, Ms. Wishnak, and thank you very much for the report. And I'll turn to my fellow council members for comments or thoughts, and then we'll discuss a little bit. But Councilmember Wilburn.
First of all, thank you for all the work that went into the report. It's it's very informative. I personally have been in conversation with council members from neighboring cities and with our Met Council representatives around the Green Line stations, specifically around micro-transit and rapid transit, in that we are developing in those areas, and Light Rail's not going to be here till 2027. So how can we fill that gap, at least until 2027, so that we can encourage people to move in that don't own a vehicle or only own one vehicle, which is, you know, part of our our goals? So I am hopeful that as a council, we can meet during a study session or something and have a robust conversation about what we want to do. And apparently, we need to do it before July, on what our options are and and what we what communication with Met Council and, yeah, what how we want to move forward around this.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wilburn. I'm Councilmember Shaq.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, overall, I think the study was is obviously very well done, and I think there's some really good data and information there. From a far-reaching perspective nationally, it's so disappointing to see what the trends are. And to to see that Minnetoka is doing better than many of our peers is almost the most disappointing piece, because we know, you know, I was just in a meeting last week where, you know, there was some discussion about conversations with property managers, and they're having trouble because they can't offer space to residents because there isn't public transit. And so, you know, part of this concept of where where do we get, you know, how do we build ridership? Well, it's a chicken and an egg scenario, right? People aren't going to rent in a place or buy in a place where they can't have transit options. So you're never going to build that unless there's transit options. I think Light Rail will do something to improve that. I personally, you know, just to kind of talk touch on this, there's work to do. I don't think opting back out, you know, in and out, out again, is the answer. I think using, you know, the the system is most effective when it works as a system. And I think our voice is probably most productive if we can help influence that system. I think the more disconnected pieces we have, the less it can offer to someone. But all of that said, and hopefully, Network Now will be part of the solution. But the inner, particularly the inter-Minitoka connections and the regional connections are just inadequate. And so, you know, people would probably use the connectors to downtown if they could get somewhere within the city to get to, you know, 394, right? So it's a conversation we need to have. I don't think we're going to opt out, you know, we're going to change anything significantly between now and July, but if if it's something we want to consider going forward, that's a that's a longer view conversation. The last thing I'll say is I my instinct is we need to get to 2027 before we make a major structural change in how we're gonna approach transit. I think we need to see how we can make Light Rail work for the city before we make a drastic change in trying to, I mean, I'm I don't, I'm personally not interested in creating our own service. That sounds like a nightmare. That's what I have to say.
Thank you, Councilmember Shaq. Councilmember Calvert?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with everything that's been said, and I'll also say that I made comments earlier, and I want to reiterate them now, that there were comments in the study. I've heard from people, and I've seen it myself, that many of the bus stops are basically just a sign put in a weed patch. There's no place to stand. There's certainly no place to sit. There's no shelter. And we live in a state that, for the time being, has real weather. You know, I'm expecting it to be a little bit like the Miami of the north, and if it stays foggy in December, we'll be planting palm trees on Lake Minnetoka soon. But until that happens, you know, I just can't imagine attracting ridership until we make it a less miserable experience in in Minnesota. And I'm not pointing the finger at Minnetoka by any means, because that's just sort of the way it is in the state. And I think it's a I think it's a real thing. I mean, in New York City, people don't ride mass transit as much as they could because there is violent crime right now on mass transit. But if you go to a bus stop, there's almost always a bench to sit on. And so I just I think that's a really important thing. And I I also said it was a chicken and egg thing. My other observation that I mentioned to Mr. Funk this morning is that there are a lot of, you know, we have to do these studies periodically, so I'm really glad that that this was done. I also know that workplaces like mine, and I work for the city of St. Paul, even though we are well past the pandemic, we are just now getting to sort of the the more formal return-to-office policies. And there and so I actually think that there will be more, I've seen it, there's a lot more traffic just in the last six months than there were for the last four years. So I think I think if we do another study soon, those patterns are going to be significantly different in terms of congestion. And, you know, maybe there's a way to improve ridership. And I do agree with Councilmember Wilburn that, you know, we well, first of all, we built all this housing in a transit-oriented development part of the city in anticipation, and it it got pushed back by years. And they're really, so we have all these people that moved there thinking there was going to be a way to get around, and there's not. And I just, it feels like a bait and switch. And I feel like there is a regional, you know, these are all regional issues. I feel like not only do we need to solve for ourselves, but I think that these are conversations that, not just talking with Met Council, but but with our surrounding suburban neighbors, that maybe we can pool our resources like we do with public safety and come up with some more creative solutions. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Calvert.
Thank you for the great report. It really was informative.
Councilmember Remaley.
Thank you, Mayor. And again, I'll echo the thanks of others that have been expressed. A really great report, really informative, helpful. I do have a couple of questions, and I think I mentioned this to Mike this morning. So one question and a few comments. Could you just kind of go over, you know, we don't have micro-transit yet, but we do have Transit Link that is available to our. Could you just talk about Transit Link and the difference, you know, what 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 makes it different and what is lacking in it as compared to what we hope to get, which is micro-transit?
Yeah, it's a good question. And I think they're probably going to be somewhat similar in terms of, basically, they will be a shared ride. So potentially, not always, but potentially, probably use smaller buses to get in and out of neighborhoods, because that's important. You can't turn buses around. And it's why you see big buses out on big streets, because they can't turn around on smaller streets. So it'll probably be a smaller bus. But I think the difference will be that it will complement the fixed route service, or that when I say fixed route, just the regular bus service. It'll complement it. So and so that you can use it at different, well, the fixed route service isn't going to work for everybody. And so the micro-transit service is really, I think, and this is why we said to clarify what it's going to mean for Minnetoka, because it's probably not going to be the same as the metro microservice they're providing in North Minneapolis. But still, probably similar platforms, similar vehicles, but probably different parameters. I don't exactly know. They haven't outlined that just yet. But but, yeah, I think there'll be very similar services. I don't know if I'm answering your question.
So Mayor, if I may, just jump in on your question.
Ms. Wishnak, yes.
So I always think about it like this. Transit Link is a scheduled ride. You have to call ahead of time. You have to schedule a time. You have to be very organized to get this ride done. In terms of micro-transit, it's a little bit more on-demand. When Paul was talking about, it's Uber and Lyft-like, but think of it as shared Uber and Lyft-like, but more on-demand. Does that make sense?
Which Uber and Lyft already have as well, that you can request the option to do a shared ride.
Right, exactly. So it's very similar. But now we're doing it under the public service umbrella, which makes it more affordable to more people. That's the difference.
And so is there any difference in terms of last mile versus, you know, can is that only used primarily within the city for both of those? Or are they, you know, used when there isn't route availability, say, to get to Maple Grove, you know, something like that?
Yeah, I think there are some restrictions in terms of what you can what you can use Transit Link for. And I think metro, I think metro microservice would probably be the same, where you would transfer to other places for longer trips. So this would really, it's intended for those local trips, I think.
Got it. Thank you. And that just leads to one other question, as if piggybacking on to the comment by Councilmember Calvert about, you know, speaking more with our neighbors, you know, a lot of the traffic now isn't between here and downtown. A lot of rider, you know, presumed ridership and traffic goes now between suburbs. And, you know, we don't have a circle line here like DC and other places have. I guess this is a question for you, not so much, but, you know, generally, as if there's any discussion within Metro Transit of providing that, or is that something that we would, again, need to look to our peer cities or neighboring cities to kind of get going?
Yeah.
If it were to be spout feasible?
Yeah, I think that's the question, is is it feasible? Are those trips feasible in terms of a, so I think Metro Transit's focused has really been on regional connectivity, kind of focusing on, you know, those those kinds of trips where they're going to be able to focus on equity areas. They're also focusing on tightening it up, I would say. And so those kind of crosstown connections, those are always really tricky. There there definitely are patterns there, but I think it is a matter of focusing on where is there going to be demand for transit? Are people going to use it on transit? Because transit is just inherently going to be slower. So if you're connecting destinations, people are stopping and all that. So if it if it can be competitive, I think, in terms of getting people between destinations, that's could be something to look at. But I don't believe Network Now had any kind of connection, like if you're thinking maybe the 494 corridor or something like that.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Other comments? Councilmember Coakley?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I just had a couple of comments. One, what Councilmember Wilburn had stated, that I think this is going to be more of a longer conversation doing like study session. I read some of the report and was looking, trying to understand it, and was wondering about, do we have a bus that's on Excelsior? I was wasn't for sure if we do, because I know in in the past, there was one.
There was.
But I haven't seen one in a long time, and I still see the bus signs on Excelsior, but I never see a bus. And I recently had an experience with a person in my home who's been trying to ride buses in our city, and came from Minneapolis and St. Paul area, knew how to ride the bus pretty well. And I'm like, I know we got a bus. I know we got a bus. And so I even went to the website to try to find transportation and help. I had a really hard time. And then my daughter, who lives in Minneapolis, said, Mom, there's a Transit Link that we have. So we did use that. And I listened to a conversation today saying, oh, you got to call every day to get the Transit Link. And I, this person had to quit a job because they couldn't get from Minnetoka, which is, you know, is kind of far, but Minnetoka to New Brighton. And it was like, if you're going to use this Transit Link, you got to go to Ridgedale. And it was just like way too much. And so I'm just like, you know what? Our transportation system is not the best. So in my mind, like, we really, if we're talking, I know this is kind of, we've been focusing on Opus area, the Green Line, we've been knowing a lot of that, and that's coming. But when we talk about what's happening now, how do we move people around our city? How do we get from just a simple bus stop off Excelsior to Ridgedale to the mall? I mean, like, I'm tired of driving my 16-year-old daughter who need license. I'm like, for real. And so it's like, it's those things. And since 2008, since I lived here, we've been dealing with transportation. Like, how do we move our people around our city? And I think it's very difficult just to get from, I mean, I'm an Uber driver sometimes, a Lyft driver, and even getting a person from their apartment building to Cup Foods is difficult. So how do we start to address some of those things? So that's why I really think we can't make a quick decision. We do really need to have a study session and really hammer this thing out, because it's not just, oh, we need micro-transit, we need Transit Link. I mean, it's going to be, we're going to have to do some big thinking. And it's going to, it's going to take money. But if we don't have that, we're not going to be able to get the people to come here to live, because they won't be able to get the transportation. And we're talking about our Sustainability Commission and bringing down level of toxins and all of those things and dealing with our climate. We have to address our transportation somehow. So that's what I think we really going to need to do.
Yeah, and I I think it probably is a bigger discussion. I hope that some of the information in the report can help with that and help inform those. I think a couple of things I will say about the metro, the micro-transit, metro microservice is, it's also a good way to test whether or not there's a market there. So if what they're if that kind of service is brought into place, you can also see, and if it's easier, I will say, because you're right, Transit Link is a little bit harder because you have to schedule that service. service. Metro Micro would be more on-demand. So it's, the response time should be more like an Uber or Lyft. But you can also use this as a way to test whether or not there's demand for something like a more fixed route scheduled kind of service. And so I think it's a good, it's probably what we would have recommended as well as part of this plan. If Network Now was not being done, I think we probably would have recommended an on-demand kind of thing, because you can test to see, this is where the demand is, and it's regular, and it's building. You can also look at trends. So, but the other thing I'll say is, it is also challenging land use to serve with a regular bus service. And it's part of the reason, you know, from the 2012 study, we actually did recommend kind of a local service that connected County Road 101 up to Ridge Dale, and it just wasn't successful over time. And I think part of it is, you know, the national decline in transit and different ways of people getting around. But it's a challenging land use, I think, to serve with regular fixed route. That's why a microtransit service is a little more flexible and can, and can tell you if there's a market there, too. So.
Thank you. Anyone else? You know, I'll make a few comments, and put that Basque slide up. Thank you, Julie. Appreciate it. You know, the, I did not spend as much time absorbing the study as I could have, but I have a few takeaways that I think are important. And one, I mean, transit in Minnetonka is hard. I mean, that's all there is to it. You've touched, you've touched on some of the reasons for that. Now, you know, just quick top-line takeaways, yeah, I don't think I'm interested in having our own transit service. I want to stick with Metro Transit. I think it's the most cost-effective opportunity we've got. It's the most cost-effective. But it's not cost-effective. I mean, it's the most, but it's not very. And that's, but it's because of the confluence of transit and land use and, you know, population density and things. And, you know, the things that really make sense are, okay, well, let's have good transit from population centers, and the rest of it is kind of good luck. I mean, you said a couple, you said a couple of things that were very interesting to me. One is, we only have large buses on large streets, you know, because you can't, you can't take large buses into small streets. And if you look at the Highway 7 and then the extension of Highway 101, I mean, there's, at the end of that, in the southwestern part of our city, we have real transit needs, real transit needs for people who, you know, don't have other transit options, I think, in many cases. But I look at those little dots, and I think, okay, that's going to be a big bus, and it's going to have one to five people, and more likely, it's going to be one or two people on that. Now, as somebody who cares about taxpayer dollars, that makes no sense. And so it's like, okay, where's a better, where's a better solution? And I think microtransit with smaller vehicles. But, but I'd almost rather than try and build a system, and I really want to give the new microtransit system trial a good shot, because I think it could be very instructive. But I think it almost, rather than try and build it, I'm almost thinking that maybe we should just subsidize Uber and Lyft and give vouchers, Uber and Lyft vouchers to the people who need transit and stay out of it, because the cost of doing what we're trying to do, and we've tried a lot of experiences, experiments, and Metro Transit's been a great partner, but it's been hard. And you know what? They've never paid out. They've never passed the smell test. I mean, basically, you know, people ride the bus and they'll pay $3 for the ride, and the cost to the taxpayer is $65 a ride per person. You know, where I went to school, that arithmetic just doesn't work. And I think, you know, to me, that's the question, is, we have to look at that confluence of housing and density and transit, and let's not say, well, we need transit, so we're going to do it at all costs, because that, that's just not practical. We've got it, we've got to really get as creative and as practical as we can to solve some of these problems, because the needs are real. But, but I just don't see, I mean, again, I think Metro Transit's the best option we've got. I don't want to have our own system. I don't want to join up with somebody else. I mean, the one thing I learned in this study was that these other, other neighboring cities who have created their own transit systems, they have their own transit systems, and their service is not as good. In fact, it's more costly than ours. Well, I don't want to raise costs, I want to reduce costs. But, so I mean, I'm not providing any answers or solutions here, but I, but I really recognize that I think, you know, I think the more micro we can go, the better. And I also think that maybe we have to consider partnering with the private sector and saying, we'll let you do that. We're not going to try and build it, because we've demonstrated that we can't do it effectively. But what's the best way to solve these transit problems that our residents who deserve to live in our community, deserve places to live, can get around effectively? And I don't, I mean, I think we're trying, but I don't think I've seen it yet.
Yeah. Yeah. You're absolutely right. I think it's a very challenging environment to serve, especially with scheduled regular bus service.
Right.
That is, you know, our cities were built around those, many of them were. New York was, that's, that's, that's the way it works. It's the way it functions. Our recent communities are built largely around cars.
Yeah.
And so transit is just much harder to make work.
Right.
So I think you're right. I think the Metro Micro Service, I think, is a much more appropriate kind of service for lower-density services like this. And it's not just the Twin Cities it's doing. This is kind of a national thing, and it, technology has kind of made it possible, honestly, to do this. And it's maybe not as cost-effective as we would like it to be. And I don't think transit is ever going to.
Right.
But it, it is a better way to serve challenging environments.
Well, and I'll just say, I mean, thank you for the study. I have a lot more study to do of the study, to be honest. But, but I also think that if, you know, we spend a lot of time on a lot of issues, and we talk a lot about housing, we talk about, we talk about a lot of things. But an incomplete answer is just as discriminatory and is just as bad for our residents. You know, we, we need, we need to come up with a whole solution. And, and, you know, we, transit is such a big part of, of any of the housing decisions we make. And, but they all have to pass the smell test. I mean, we're looking to, somebody's have to pay for it, and we're looking at taxpayers to do that. And it's a big challenge. It's just a daunting challenge.
Yeah.
So thank you so much, Ms. Wieschnack.
Just to wrap up, Mayor, if I could, I think the next time we'll see this, and I'm thinking in my head, we'll have to extend the contract in July, but you'll see the EIP, which has transit in it.
Yep.
So in June, that's scheduled already. You don't have another study session. You can put this on. So we'll bring it under the umbrella of EIP, and then we'll just heighten the attention on that this year, so you can have some more discussion. But we'll plan on an extension in July, because it'll take a little bit more time than.
Great. But I'll add that if you can come up with a study session that will solve this problem, I think this council would be willing to have an extra study session sometime. I mean, I think, but I think it's, I think it's just a monumental challenge.
Oh, great. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you all. Anything? Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Now, we don't have any action here. We just heard the report.
Yes.
Pardon me? Okay. Okay. Well, we, I will, would somebody like to move that we accept the report? Thank you, Councilwoman Calvert.
I move that we accept the 2024 Minnetonka Transit Study.
Councilwoman Wilburn?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Councilwoman Calvert and a second by Councilwoman Wilburn to accept the study. Thank you very much. Ms. Falk, please call roll.
Remaley?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
Foster Bolton?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
We're soon.
Yes, motion carries. All right. Thank you. So we're done with special matters, right? Okay. Well, that, that, we knew that this was going to be the heavy lift tonight, so thank you for that. So next item is reports from city manager and council members. So Mr. Funk, I'll turn it to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening again, Council. Just a couple of items for your attention. First off, Family Fun Day is coming up, and that is a popular event that is scheduled for Saturday, January 25th. We've had a lot of promotions on that, so encourage residents to attend. Also from Public Works, or new from Public Works, is Winter Salt Week. And so the city will participate in this new national event, which is scheduled for January 27th through the 31st. Just a shout out to Public Works Operations Manager, Dering Ellingson. He will be a presenter at that event. And then also in terms of with the public, the city staff is also preparing a proclamation and other outreach material to be shared in the upcoming weeks. As we look at Winter Salt Week, we take our salt usage seriously and how we manage salt during the wintertime. And so I appreciate our efforts of Mr. Manchester and our Public Works staff. Also want to mention from Public Works, that Orchard Park is scheduling a tree and brush removal, so that is coming up. And so we always have some attention to our parks during the winter, and Orchard Park is going to have a little refresh in terms of some tree and shrub removal, or excuse me, tree and bush removal. So that is coming up. And then two more things. Libs Lake Natural Resources and Engineering Staff recently invited Libs Lake area residents to participate and share input on an upcoming lake management plan. This is being promoted through Minnetonka Matters, and we do have a project page up and running on Minnetonka Matters, so encouraging residents from Libs Lake to get involved with our staff as we look to, again, provide and start an implementation process of a lake management plan. And then last one I mentioned, we've had some water leaks. I think Councilmember Calvert can attest that we've had a recent water leak. We had six in the past two weeks. On average, we have about 40 per year, but those have been going down, and that's really contributed to the city council and the city's decision, looking long-term, as we've looked to invest more in our public infrastructure. And so even though we have some breaks, they are down, but we still have those occurring once in a while. We've had some milder winters, so that's also contributing to the, to the lower numbers, but they do pop up from time to time. So our staff appreciate their efforts. They often get called out, usually after hours, nights, or weekends to tend to those, and really appreciate our staff and full attention to make sure we're servicing our residents. So with that, I turn it back over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Funk. Council, anything that you would like to comment on or report? Councilwoman Calvert?
Just very briefly, yes. I was one of the people that had a little water main break in front of my house, and I will tell you that the city was incredibly prompt and fixed it right away. It was barely an inconvenience, and I just want to thank our wonderful staff. And I just, also just want to mention briefly, I met my husband in California. He was a wildland firefighter for his entire career, and I just want to send my thoughts and prayers to the people in California, because it really is probably, I mean, it really is a 9/11 event for that state and really for our country. I think it's going to affect us in ways we don't even realize. I think we can look for our insurance rates to be going up here in Minnetonka because of events like that. And to the mayor's point about being mindful about ways that we can be better stewards of the earth that we live on, if you can take a few, you know, a few minutes to do things, just to, you know, be more conscious about how we use our planet, I think it's well worth the time and effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Calvert. Anyone else? Councilwoman Remaley?
Thank you, Mayor. On a less serious note, I just want to applaud the recreation staff. I participated, along with my daughter, in the sauna in the park. Did an experience a couple of weeks ago. And while that, it's over at Shady Oak Beach, you go, and the cost for us to do the sauna experience was less than half than some of the, you know, kind of saunas that are around in our area, in the metro area, and even in our neighboring cities. So really appreciate the fact that we have undertaken this, and for $25, you can go and sit in a sauna for an hour and a half, and you can get great health benefits, like the Finns and the Scandinavians know, by going and sitting in a cold lake. They chop a hole of ice, and if you go and you submerge to your vagus nerve, ideally, you stay two to three minutes, but I managed 30 seconds. My daughter managed three minutes. So I am working up to optimal health benefits and just, it's not required, you don't have to do the plunge, but if you can, it actually does feel great. So encourage anybody who has any interest at all to go. It's a great thing to do with friends, family. You can book it for a private 10-person experience, and it's just lovely. So thank you again to our recreation services for making the investment and providing this, this, another great service to our community.
Thank you, Councilwoman Remaley. Anyone else? Couple of quick things. Just, first of all, this is our first meeting of, regular meeting of the year, so I just want to wish everybody a Happy New Year, and I hope everyone has a successful, prosperous 2025. Clearly, the wildfires in California are very top of mind, and, you know, I just hope and pray that those fires go out soon, the weather improves, and, and the people of California can get back to putting their lives together. Because, you know, I think of the elected officials in the city of Los Angeles and nearby cities, and, you know, how do you prepare for a tragedy like that? And I'm, you know, very thankful for our public safety personnel who do so much training and, and put us in a, you know, a relatively good spot. But if we had a horrific conflagration like that occur in our community, it would, it would impact far more than just us and just our public safety personnel, and it would be an all-hands-on-deck situation for the city, the region, the state. And so, but I am proud to say that our public safety personnel are, are prepared to help people stay safe, but I just hope and pray that we never face a horrible situation like that. On a kind of personal note, my sister lives in Southern California, not too far from the wildfires, but she hasn't been impacted. But she had a, she had a serious health emergency that could have been fatal. But she, she had quick intervention, and the, the ambulance service came quickly. They took her to the right hospital. She had immediate surgery, and something that the surgeon said would be, could have been fatal. This all occurred on a Thursday, and she went home on Monday, and the only restriction she faced was she couldn't go to the gym for a week. So, you know, I mean, our family is so thankful, but, but it's another example of people, public safety personnel, being available to do what was necessary. And we all need that. We hope we don't need it today, and, but having the public safety personnel we have, our police and fire, save people's lives. And I just want to say thank you to them and to public safety personnel throughout the country. So with that, next item on the agenda is citizens wishing to discuss matters not on the agenda. So if you have something that you would like to talk to the city council about, and it's not an item that is on our agenda for tonight, you can bring it forward. We will listen to what you have to say. We will not take action on it tonight. We will turn it over to staff, and you will be followed up. There will be follow-up. But if you have something you'd like to let us know, please come forward, state your name and address, and make your report. Is there anyone?
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'm August Olson. Are these on?
Yep, they are. You're good.
Cool. I'm August Olson. I live at 3629 Plymouth Road. And with these fires in LA, it also reminded me of the situation in Appalachia. You see, federal aid there has been significantly lacking, and there have been issues in getting support and necessary aid. And given that we sort of fall about halfway between the major urban center in the Appalachian region, Asheville, the Minneapolis-St. Paul area does, and major urban center in Southern California, LA, there's a significant risk that we might not get sufficient federal aid, very similar to what happened in Appalachia. So what I'm concerned about is that we need to make plans that, you know, it's possible the federal aid might be lacking or insufficient, and also could be cut short quickly in case of another disaster in a larger or more populous region of the country.
Thank you. Is there, is there anyone else? All right, seeing no one, we will move on. Next item on the agenda is bids and purchases, and we have none of those tonight. Item 10 is the consent agenda, and we have a lot of items on the consent agenda tonight. And so the way we do it is we, I will read those into the record. These are items that are typically routine, so we've all looked at the background information on them, and we, we will vote on them in one motion and one second. I am going to do something a little different tonight. I'm going to inform my council members. We inform council members that if they want to pull an item for further discussion, they can do that. But sometimes we want to make, just make a brief comment. And so I'm going to ask first for council comments on any of these things, and then, and then we will ask to see if anyone wants to pull an item. So I'll read these into the record, and then, and then I'll take comments, and then record, and then, and then I'll take comments, and then if anything needs to be pulled, we'll get that pulled, and I think that will be efficient, and, and I hope that new way of doing things works. So I'll just read these items into the record. Item 10A is an ordinance amending the City Code Section 710005 regarding certain fees. Item 10B is the 2025 Study Session Work Plan. Item 10C is a, is the 2025 Strategic Plan Action Steps. Item 10D is an agreement with the Minnetoka School District for School Resource Officer Services. Item 10E is the 5432 Roland Road Twin Home Project by Amani Construction. Item 10F is a request to change a business concept to a liquor license establishment located at 11032 Cedar Lake Road. 11, item 10G is an agreement with Hennepin County to participate in the Elevate Hennepin and Open to Business programs. Item 10H is designation of the official newspaper for 2025. Item 10I is a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Minnetoka and law enforcement, Labor Services Local Number 442. Item 10J is a premise permit application to conduct lawful gambling in a liquor establishment. Item 10K is the city manager 2025 compensation, and item 10L is shared values of the Minnetoka City Council. So first, council, any comments? Councilmember Wilburn?
So I just have two quick comments. On 10A, the councilmember Calvert and I were not able to find the addendum. Oh, did you find it? Oh, I refreshed mine. It's still not there. Okay. We'll figure that one out. And then on 10F, I just wanted to express my excitement about the new restaurant concept and wishing for their success.
Well, thank you. Are there, are there any other comments from councilmembers?
What she said.
All right, very good, very good. And then would anyone either in the audience or the council like to pull any of these items for further consideration? All right, so we've had comments, and we haven't pulled anything. Would someone like to make a motion on the consent agenda items in item 10? Councilmember Calvert?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move approval of consent agenda items 10A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, and L.
It's almost your whole ABCs there. Councilmember, Councilmember Coakley, excuse me? Councilmember Coakley?
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion by Councilmember Calvert, and a second by Councilmember Coakley. Ms. Falk, please call roll.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
Foster Bolton?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Weersum?
Yes, motion carries. Now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say one thing. I have a note here that Julie Eddington was on, online for comments on item 10E. I didn't hear her. I don't think she was going to make any comments, but I wanted to acknowledge that.
She's also here for the HIA in case we need her for that.
Yes, I have that noted. And I'm sure I can skip over that, too, just like I did this one. So anyway, we'll, we'll see if we can get there. All right, let's see. That brings us to item 11A, or 11, and that is consent agenda items requiring five votes, and we have two of those items. And like these, I will, I will do it the same way we did item 10. So 11A is applications for the annual renewal of precious metal and secondhand dealer licenses for 2025. And item 10B is a resolution ratifying application for and accepting award of grants from, a grant from the Metropolitan Council Environmental Services 2025 Private Property Inflow and Infiltration Grant Program. So council, any comments on either of these? Anyone want to pull either of these, or a motion? Councilmember Shaq?
Thank you, Mayor. I move approval of consent agenda items 11A and 11B.
A second, Councilmember Wilburn?
I will second.
All right, we've got a motion by Councilmember Shaq, and a second by Councilmember Wilburn. Ms. Falk, please call roll.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
Foster Bolton?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Weersum?
Yes, motion carries. Item 12 is introduction of ordinances, and we have none of those. Item 13 is public hearings, and we have one. 13A is the Villas at Chayswood Housing Improvement Area, HIA. Ms. Wischnack?
Thank you, Mayor. Even though we're not to February, it probably feels like Groundhog Day with this application. We already did this once, and what we're doing tonight is just readapting it. There was a technical error in the notice, so we want to make sure that was done properly. So we re-notified everyone and made sure everybody had the proper notice. And then for tonight's consideration, you would actually hold the public hearing again. You did that in November, November 18th, if you have forgotten that date. You would readapt the ordinance establishing the HIA and adopt the resolution. Just for your knowledge, if you forgot how much money, we're about in the $12.2 million range for this improvement that is being paid for by the residents of this area. For example, on a one-bedroom unit, the annual fee would be about $5,800 or $486 a year, or a month, excuse me, and then in total $57,000. And then there's an example provided for a two-bedroom as well. That's in the resolution in the exhibit. I'm going to keep my comments short because you've already heard my presentation about this. If you have anything specific, please ask me, but at this point, I'll turn it back to the mayor. Thank you.
All right, and I will do my usual, ask the council if you have any questions of staff on this item. I'm seeing no questions. So the next thing for me to do is to open the public hearing to see if anyone would like to comment on this item. So I'll open the public hearing and ask anyone if they would like to come forward and comment on this. And I will say that we already heard your comments. At the last time we passed it, this is just an informality, but, or a formality, rather, but if anyone has comments, they're welcome to come forward and make them. Is there anyone? All right, seeing no one, I will close this public hearing. Oops, excuse me, there is. Oh, you got to come up and state your name and address.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Doug Strainess. I work as a consultant for the association, and I want to begin by apologizing because what I have to share is very last minute, and I want to make it very clear that I do not want to do anything to delay approval of this. In particular, want to talk about the resolution approving housing improvement area fees. And as you'll note, there are two fees. Ms. Wischnack referred to them, one for the one-bedrooms, one for the two-bedrooms. What I would like to address is it also states...
Can't hear you.
Can't hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Not back here.
Okay, well, just speak closer to the microphone, and maybe do you want to...
Okay.
We can hear you. That's good.
Okay. What I want to address is the resolution says no partial prepayments, and I completely understand that. If partial prepayments were just allowed in general, potentially you could have dozens or scores of people making partial prepayments, which would result in scores of individual HIA fees, which would be an extreme administrative challenge slash nightmare. So I can completely understand that. But the one thing that I want to put out for consideration is would staff and the council consider allowing a 50% prepayment? So in other words, you'd end up with four HIA fees. There'd be, for the one-bedrooms, there'd be an HIA fee for the entire thing, and an HIA fee for somebody who prepaid half. So...
All right, well, I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn to, I'm gonna turn to Ms. Wischnack on that, but, but my, my gut says that we will probably pass this tonight. And, and that's really a consideration for your association.
Absolutely.
And, and if they come back with a different record, are we in a position, can you modify it down the road if, if the associating come back? Because I don't think unilaterally we're in a position to do that for, for one individual's request. Ms. Wischnack, help me out.
No problem, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers. Well, one, we don't negotiate at a meeting, so that's first issue.
Right, a good point, yes.
Second issue is that wasn't brought up to us in advance. So if that was a desire, we would have considered it, my guess, and if Julie Eddington is still on the line, she can weigh in as well. But typically, we won't do that because of the problem with the issuance of the bond. And so we have to make sure there's cash flow for the bond to occur. And so these payments are really important. There's a prepayment period, and so I'm not sure I fully understand why this is coming up now, but because we had kind of covered that ground before. So if we can ask...
Yeah, let's, is, our IT folks back there, can you help us get Ms. Eddington on the line, perchance? Maybe?
I have thumbs down.
No, no, okay.
Okay, she must have left the meeting.
All right.
Again, I would recommend that the council has passed this resolution. If there are changes down the road, we can certainly come back to you with that, but I would not change it this evening, no.
Yeah, no, I don't, and I think that's right. Thank you for coming forward. Is there, is there other comments?
Yeah, I just wanted, my name's Cara Dahlberg. I'm from 6020 Chasewood Parkway. I just wanted to clarify that the prepayment conversation is coming up because the original notice that went into the Sun Sailer instead of to the individual homeowners did mention a prepayment option. But when the city decided to pull that back with a different clarification saying that there was no partial prepayment options, that is when we've heard a lot of homeowners not liking that that option was taken back. So that's why we've been thinking of negotiating with the 50% prepayment, because the software system and the IT people could actually work with that number. So that's what we're coming back with. But we've had a lot of grievances of hearing that prepayment being taken back for the partial, sorry, for the partial prepayment. So I just wanted to clarify that.
All right, thank you. And your name is?
Cara Dahlberg.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Ms. Wischnack, as you said, well, okay, if you, I know, now, go ahead. The public, public hearing is still open, but, but we're not going to change this tonight. So we're not negotiating. If this needs to be reopened another time, that's a separate consideration by the city. So go ahead.
Just my comment to follow on what Cara said. I'm David Alt now at 6167 Chayswood.
I am the current board president of the Chayswood Committee.
Yes.
With a lot of feedback from our community as well, and from owner myself, a $70,000 payment is, is a lot for a postgraduate and for a lot of our fixed fee residents who are retiring that do not have incomes to drop that kind of sum. I would imagine a 50% prepayment would be a lot more feasible. So just wanted to comment on how beneficial that would be for our community in consideration.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Wischnack, I have a question.
Yes.
Would we, it sounds like there's been some activity. Would we be better off tabling this and bringing it back?
No.
Okay, then, then, then we're gonna go...
Well, I guess I can answer, Mayor, I guess.
Okay, well, then, then what we're gonna do is we're gonna go ahead...
Let me tell you your options, though.
Yes, please do.
Because you certainly have the option to table it. That is absolutely within the council's right to do that. What that does is extend the public hearing and extend the timeframe. So that's one consideration. I know they want to get going on this project, so I'm not sure everybody would be in agreement with an extension. The second issue is if you go ahead and adapt it, and at some later point, there would be some other decision made, we'd have to republicize and republish the notice and the hearing and have it a second hearing. This isn't the only action that has to take place. There's bonding that will happen as we move forward as well. So there are other actions that the council needs to take. But again, we don't negotiate in the meeting, so that's, it's a really hard position to put staff in. So if this was an issue, I would have hoped to have known about it today before the meeting.
Right, yeah.
Which is unfortunate, and I apologize if people didn't understand that. That's not the intention. So, but right now, it says prepayment allowed, yes. It doesn't allow a partial payment, and you cannot pay after the assessment happens or the fee is assessed. So that's what the resolution says tonight. I want to be clear about what the resolution indicates.
Right. And so with that, I think, I think the options are clear. I'm going to close the public hearing, and then I will bring it back to the council for comments, and we'll take action tonight. So I'll close the public hearing. And then Councilmember Shaq?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I'm a little perplexed. Did something change? I mean, my understanding was that we, that the notice was wrong, but that we're getting the same thing that we got in November? Am I incorrect in that understanding?
Councilmember Shaq, I'm looking at the November 18th version of the resolution. It does talk about prepayment. I think this resolution is clear in that it says partial prepayment is not allowed. However, that's always been the city's policy. It doesn't matter what HIA we have been adopting. That's been typical in the past. So maybe it was to better clarify. Maybe we were getting questions about that. So we wanted to be clear in this resolution. So that's the only difference I see.
Councilmember O'Malley?
Yeah, there was reference made to something incorrectly printed in the Sun Sailer. I'm just confused about this, A, as well, and B. So the other option is people can, they're asking for a 50% prepayment, but the other option is you just pay every month as per the original thing, and you just keep going. And if you sell, then that, you know, goes on to other people. So there's really, I'm not sure what the issue is unless there's some financial advantage to doing a 50% prepayment anyway. So I'm just a little sorry, confused about those two issues. Thank you.
Council, Ms. Wischnack?
Mayor and Councilmember O'Malley, I think what the issue is, is if people could pay down, say, $5,000 of their total assessment and just write down their total assessment, their monthly fees would be smaller. So if they had some cash on hand and wanted to pay it down, I think that's the purpose, and then have different payments. The problem for that is everybody would then have a different payment. And yeah, there's some logistical issues with that, but there's also bond considerations as well. So there's a lot more to it than just saying, sure, partial prepay can be done. That's, that's not as simple as it sounds.
So, go ahead.
Just the second question then about, something about the announcement in the Sun Sailer or something like that. I'm not sure I'm following.
Mayor and Councilmember O'Malley, I'm not quite following that myself, but I would love to visit with the property owner afterwards if they can explain that.
And so I guess, I guess one more question slash comment is, is that the city is stepping in and offering financing for this at no cost benefit, no, no financial consideration, but we're putting ourselves out there, our AAA bond credibility out there in order to help neighbors to do this. So happy to do that, glad that, you know, we're going to be able to preserve this naturally occurring affordable housing. I'm a little perplexed as well at, you know, kind of the complaints about this. Maybe this is just misunderstanding, misinformation about that. But, you know, if you prefer not to have this, because this would, you know, create undue burden for, you know, city staff in terms of administering or our ability to get a bond, you know, certainly I would not think that that would be a desired option. But of course, that's the other option. Is that right? Is that correct?
Mayor and Councilmember O'Malley, I would go a little bit further because the law does provide for undoing the resolution as well. So there is a, an appeal period, if you will. And I don't want to be too technical about it. There's lots of rules you have to follow to get the enactment of a resolution to, to not be effective. So there is a period of time that the city waits before enacting the fee on the property.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other council questions or comments? So just my, my quick comment... So just my, my quick comment is I think the learning here is that the Villas at Chasewood HIA was brought forward by the association to the city, and we acted on that and approved that. There was a technical error, and so we're having to redo that. But as things came out, the way to approach a change is to, is to have an agreement from your association. And if there is a change down the road, approach the city on what would be necessary. But we agreed to this some months ago. We are re-agreeing to it to correct a technicality in our approval. And assuming that we approve that tonight, that's what's going to happen. Your next action, if you choose to want to do something, that is a separate action. Talk to your association, get your agreement, get all the votes that you need, get it all squared away, and then see if it's still feasible with the city to make those changes. But right now, what, we're gonna, we're gonna pass exactly the same thing, except for a technical description. It's the same action we took some months ago. And we did that because we want to, you know, the city doesn't gain anything on this that benefits the city. But I did brag about this in some housing meetings because this is preserving affordable housing in our community. That's vitally important. And I recommended to different housing organizations that I participate in that HIAs are a tool that can potentially preserve affordable housing that would otherwise go away. So I view it as a valuable housing tool. But if we change midstream, we're going to create more problems than anybody ever intended. So we're not going to do that. So with that, council, is there a motion on this item? Councilmember Calvert?
Thank you, Mayor. I move approval of adopting the ordinance establishing the HIA and the fee schedule for Villas at Chasewood.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilwoman Mealy?
I'll second.
All right. We've got a motion by Councilmember Calvert and a second by Councilmember Mealy. Ms. Falk, please call roll.
Mealy?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
Foster Bolton?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Weersum?
Yes, motion carries. That brings us to item 14, Other Business, and we have a couple of items. One is appointing the acting mayor and alternate acting mayor for 2025. And I have spoken to, we have a rotation and an approach to doing this. And, and so for 2025, the alter, the acting mayor will be Councilmember Dr. Kimberly Wilburn. And the alternate acting mayor will be Rebecca Shaq. And that is the recommendation based on the rotation that's been in place. And if someone would like to make that motion, we'll move forward. Councilmember Calvert?
Thank you, Mayor. I make the motion to make Councilmember Wilburn the acting mayor and Councilmember Shaq the alternate, alternate acting mayor.
And is there a second? Councilmember Foster Bolton?
I'll second.
All right. Got a motion by Councilmember Calvert and a second by Councilmember Foster Bolton. Ms. Falk, please call roll.
Mealy?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
Foster Bolton?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
Weersum?
Yes, motion carries. Item 14B is a resolution for ordering feasibility study for Highway 7 and Clear Spring Road Utility Extension Project. Mr. Manchester?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For you tonight is item 14B, the resolution for the feasibility, Highway 7 and Clear Springs Road Extension. Next slide. So the project is located just south of Highway 7 and slightly east of County Road 101. It originated during the sale of a property, so which received notice. They had a failing septic system at the property 16809 Highway 7. The Minnesota Pollution Control Agency requires compliance within 10 months. And then at the same time, the city would require connection to utilities, which were not extended in previous years. There'd been a couple of opportunities. But since they had an active septic in well, the extensions were not made at that time. It would require connections to move past two other addresses, 16821 and 16907 Highway 7. So just like other previous projects in the past, the city would complete a feasibility study to kind of look at what it would take to run utilities to these properties. At the same time, look at funding and costs and then assessments. The project would be fully assessed to properties or deferred assessed to the properties. So the cost would be to these residents. We would complete a feasibility study, and then we'd bring it back to council this spring with additional information. So this would be just the start of the process. We'd come back with additional details. So before you is a motion to adopt the resolution ordering the feasibility report for Highway 7 Clear Spring Road Utility Project Extension 25992. With that, I'll keep it short and turn it back to the mayor for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Manchester. Council, any questions on this item? Councilmember Coakley?
I have a question, Mayor. I just want to know, like, this, how much was the cost for each property to be in compliance? I guess, just curious about that.
Mr. Manchester?
Councilmember Coakley, Mayor and Council, we would complete the feasibility report to get the costs put together. As far as repairing the septic, is that your question, potential?
Well, what I was thinking, or I'm not even for sure, but it sounded like that there was going to be like a fee or something applied to them if they didn't be in compliance or something.
Yeah, I might defer to the city attorney on this one.
Ms. Heine, welcome.
Mayor and Councilmember Coakley, the purpose of the feasibility study is to determine exactly what would be done and to estimate the cost. So we'll know what the potential costs are for the property owners upon the completion of the feasibility study.
Okay, so that, okay, I understand that part. So they're not, why, why aren't they in compliance then?
So these properties are not hooked up to municipal water and sewer. They are still using septic tanks. And they have to have their septic tanks inspected on a periodic basis. But particularly on sale, they're always inspected upon sale. And when this property was coming up for sale, they determined that the septic tank is failing. And so it needs to either be replaced to comply with the MPCA regulations or it needs to connect to city sewer and water. It has to connect to city sewer and water because that's what the city ordinances provide.
Okay, so I understood that in the report. But what I didn't understand is why haven't they either connected the, connected to city water? Was it like a fee issue? Or is it something that they couldn't afford? I was just trying to understand why haven't they complied with what is being asked?
The city sewer and water is not yet available to the properties. It needs to be extended along. And so I don't know if you can with, with a mouse or something, but it will need to be extended. Show the property 16809. That is where the system is failing. The available connection is down at the southwesterly end. And so it needs to be extended from that southwesterly point, past those first two properties and up to the third to serve it.
All right. Councilmember Coakley, is your question answered? Are you good?
Rebecca just hung me out. Thank you, Rebecca. She's been hanging me out lately a lot, so thank you.
All right. Are there, council, are there any other questions? And so just to be clear, we are not approving anything other than the feasibility study at this point. If there's something to be approved by the council at a later date, we will have that opportunity when we, when the costs are available, correct?
Correct, Mayor.
All right. So we are approving this resolution ordering the feasibility report for this utility work. So is there a motion? Councilmember Wilburn?
I move adoption of the resolution ordering the feasibility report for the Highway 7 Clear Spring Road Utility Extension Project Number 25992.
Thank you. Is there, is there a second? Councilmember Foster Bolton?
I second.
All right. We've got a motion by Councilmember Wilburn and a second by Councilmember Foster Bolton. Ms. Falk, please call roll.
Mealy?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
Foster Bolton? Shaq?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Weersum?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is appointments and reappointments, and we have several. First is the council and staff annual appointments. And Mr. Funk, that is your report.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So included in your packet is, well, there's an attachment that illustrates the 2025 council representatives and staff appointments to various committees and commissions. You first studied this at the December study session. And at that time, staff had completed and reviewed where staff would participate in various boards and commissions that we participate in. And then at that study session, you, the council, weighed in on which boards and commissions you would be represented. And some of the ones that are listed there, again, for those that might be watching or listening, would be appointments to the League of Minnesota Cities Policy Adoption Committees. That is the same for Metro Cities and also the Metro Legislative Commission. The city participates in a lot of other partnership-type meetings and associations. And those are all noted in the regional organizations section. Then there's also Minnetoka Area Associations. So again, different representatives are needed from the council on those as well. Again, this is coming back to you for formal approval. This was discussed at the December study session. And for you, Mayor and Council, tonight's action requires you to approve this in front of you. Again, staff is solidified in where we'll be participating from staff perspectives. And then again, these are boards and commissions that you've identified, council, that you would be representing the city on. So again, turn it back over to you for approval and then, or conversation if there are any changes yet to be made. So with that, turn it back over to you. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Funk. And council, any questions or comments? Councilmember Shaq?
Thank you, Mayor. I just noticed, happened to notice one, I think, oversight, which is I think Councilmember Wilburn should be slotted in as the alternate for the Regional Council of Mayors as the acting mayor for 2025.
Correct.
Mayor and Councilmember Shaq, that'd be correct.
Given tonight, given tonight's action, it was correct up until we took that action tonight. Yes.
And we would duly make that change.
Right. And then another comment that I can make, because Mr. Funk and I talked about this today. So Councilmember Mealy expressed an interest in being on the Metro Cities Municipal Revenues Committee. I was on that, and I said, well, if you want to take my spot, that's great. And she's going to do that. But the other thing is that these, these policy committees are not just restricted to the official designee of the city. If somebody has an interest in a policy committee and you're not the official designee of the city, that does not preclude you from signing up with the league or with Metro Cities to be part of that. So I just want to throw that encouragement out so that if there's something you want to be on and you're not the designee, that should not stop you from, from applying, I believe. So anyway, so I'll throw that out. Is there, are there any other questions or comments or a motion? Councilmember Mealy?
Yeah, I will bring this up because, Mike, we talked about this. You know, some of our, the newer members of council, Patsy and I, you know, right now, I'm officially on one committee. And I think this year, you know, last year, it wasn't a big deal. This year, I have the bandwidth and the, you know, kind of desire to serve. And, you know, especially on League of Minnesota Cities. So I don't know if, you know, there's some way that I can do that. I'm happy to do it as an alternate non-voting member. But, you know, sometimes if there's, I understand in the past that previous councils, you know, there had been a dearth of interest, you know, in some ways. And so, you know, some council members had to do double duty. And, you know, I would have brought this, or I had been hoping to bring this up at the December study session. But as, as we'll recall, we went up to the midnight deadline. So it was getting late, and it was difficult to do it then. So I don't know if, if it's at all possible at this late juncture to somehow do so. If not, then I'm happy to get on as a non-voting member of a committee and will hope to do something more in terms of that next year.
And I, I mean, the, I don't have a response, to be honest, because unless somebody wants to back off, I mean, we can, you know, I think that's something that we can consider going forward. But I don't think we're going to take an action tonight. But I don't want to preclude. The other, so anyway, and I, I don't, I don't have the league bylaws in front of me to say, gee, if we have two representatives from the city, when, you know, usually the votes are by acclamation. I don't think, or, you know, they're voice votes. I don't think you're really precluded from voting. It's just, you know, as you represent the city. I, I don't know if the city attorney or somebody has a comment. I obviously don't know what to do with that comment.
Maybe I'll start, and then the city attorney can, can weigh in. I would just say this, Mayor and Council. So these are yours, and so it's really a discussion you need to have amongst yourself on who's serving where. To give you an example on, for example, the third one noted there is the League of Minnesota Cities Improving Local Economies Committee. We do have two council members on that one. So I think to the mayor's point, you can have multiple representatives to any of these committees. I'm not as familiar with Metro Cities or the MLC. Certainly, MLC would not apply. But like for the league, their standing policy, I believe, is you can have more than one city representative attend. And I think Councilmember Coakley and Councilmember Wilburn can attest to their experience on the one I'm pointing out, which is the Improving Local Economies, because I'm also on that one. So there's three of us there, but each city has one vote. And so when there are votes cast, it is one, one vote per city. So you just have to decide if there's more than one, who's going to vote on behalf of the city.
Councilmember Wilburn?
Yeah, and I can speak to that. It generally is a roll call votes, vote. So they will call each city and we just, I mean, if Kizzy's there, then she'll, she'll do the vote since I'm the alternate. If she's not there, then I'll vote. But it, the cities that have more than one representative decide beforehand who's going to be doing the voting. And then when they do the roll call, the vote's taken.
And the, can the, okay, continue. Councilmember Calvert, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and I just want to say that I'm on the Improving Services Delivery Committee. And I think about the city of Minneapolis, and they very often have at least two of their intergovernmental relations people there. And sometimes maybe somebody else as well. So I, you know, lots of cities have more than one person at the committee meetings, at the policy committee meetings.
And I'm, and I'm happy to do that. I was under the impression at our last study session that we were being discouraged from having more than one member. But, you know, that might have been mishearing on my part.
At the, I think it's different at the, at the state league. The national league is, I think, is a little bit different. But, but, you know, I think about Thousand Oaks on the EENR committee. They, they have, I think, at least two people at the EENR at the same time. So they have a staffer and usually, I think the mayor is usually there.
All right, thank you. Then I'll just, I'll withdraw. I'll just find a committee that I want to plug into then for now as a non-voting member, as an alternate, if I can. Or do I have to make that call right now?
I, I think it would be, my, my recommendation to you, Mayor Weersum and Councilmember Mealy and council, is that if you're interested in one of these, we should note it here. That way, we can signal to, if it is the League of Minnesota Cities, if you're looking to be an alternate, like is pointed out now a couple of times with Councilmember Coakley and Councilmember Wilburn on local economies. If you're Councilmember Mealy, if you're interested in fiscal futures or improving service delivery, I would recommend noting that here. That way, we can then, as staff, we signal and, and register council for these. And then it's just, it's cleaner that way, because then the league is just wondering who's, who's representing the city.
Okay, then I'll do service delivery, if I can be a second on that. All right?
Yeah, well, it. Very, very good.
So I think your request is to the mayor and council. And so that would be to your request, Councilmember Mealy, I would recommend to the mayor and council. And then council would vote on that as part of this action tonight.
All right. We can do that. Are there any other comments or any other issues from anyone? So we will, we will add Councilmember Mealy to the Service Delivery, LMC Improving Service Delivery Committee. Is that correct with that? All right, we'll make that change in addition. And are there any other changes to this list? If not, would somebody like to make a motion? Councilmember Wilburn?
So I move that we approve council appointments as listed.
So I move that we approve council appointments as listed with the addition of Councilmember Remaley, and the Improving Service Delivery Committee as an alternate, and Councilmember Wilburn in place of Councilmember Calvert on the Regional Council, Council of Mayors.
Very good. And a second? Councilmember Coakley?
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion by Councilmember Wilburn, a second by Councilmember Coakley. Ms. Falk, please call roll.
Remaley?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
Foster Bolton?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Weersum?
Yes, motion carries. Next item, 15B, is appointments for the Off-Leash Dog Work Group. Mr. Funk?
Thank you, Mayor Weersum, members of the council. So tonight, under item 15, is, it's noted, appointments for Off-Leash Dog Work Group. So in your packet, there is a, a list of names that the staff is recommending, well, actually, staff is, staff has recommended some of those names, and then the other names were vetted out through our recent application process. And so staff did advertise for two weeks in December solicitation for anyone from the public interested in serving on this work group. Those names were collected, those were distributed to council, council reviewed those and recommended those names to the mayor, and so those are listed on page two of the staff report. So we have two members from the Friends of Minnetoka Parks. And just to remind the council, Matt Kumka took a lead in working with the Friends of Minnetoka Parks and the Minnetoka Paws for Parks. Those are the two groups that have different perspectives, and so we asked those groups, we as staff, asked those groups to provide us with two recommended names. Those are the names noted from the Friends of Minnetoka Parks, also then from the Minnetoka Paws for Parks. And then we had solicited, as a noted, names for, solicited names for those that would be interested in serving for, as residents. And so we had numerous applications. Again, council, you reviewed those. Those are the names noted under the five residents for the, this work group. And so what's presented for you this evening then is a motion to approve the appointments as noted from staff and then being recommended through our process from Mayor Weersum. So with that, Mayor and Council, turn it back over to you for discussion and action.
All right. And then I, a couple of comments. One was, thank you to council for your recommendations. We scored those recommendations, and these recommendations are based on the top, I mean, there was no, it was just, right, the top five or however many there are, there, yeah, the top five, based on our scoring, were selected. So that's consistent with that. And then I do have one question. The dates for this have been, have been provided, and I know I'll miss the second meeting. So in that case, does the acting mayor attend on my behalf, or is it, is there a recommendation on how that should be handled? Sorry about that, I didn't mention this to you when we talked earlier today.
So Mayor and Council, on this work group, there is no recommended participation from the mayor or council. So it is the names as noted in the staff report. When, when we get to the next agenda item, which is for the Zoning Code Rewrite Work Group, that's where we'll have a representation of mayor and council. But for the work group related to dogs and off-leash dog areas, the name's noted, which is two members from Friends of Minnetoka Parks.
No, but if you look in the paragraph above, you know, there are other people noted will consist of the following individuals, and so the mayor is one of those. And so I'm wondering, if I'm not at a meeting, do, do I have a replacement, or do I just miss the meeting? Or am I wrong about that? Oh, so I don't, okay, well, that's good. I don't have to go then?
So you can miss the second meeting?
Good, I don't mind missing this one.
Is that okay?
I, I, I can miss all three meetings, because I'm not on it. Okay, that's good. That's good. I'm so glad this is a public meeting. All right, we'll leave it. Scratch my second question. We're good.
All right, thank you.
Pardon me, Mr. Funk. Okay, so this is where we are. Is there, is there a motion to approve? Councilmember Shaq?
Thank you, Mayor. I move approval of the appointments for the Off-Leash Dog Work Group.
And a second, Councilmember Foster Bolton?
I second.
All right, we've got a motion by Councilmember Shaq and a second by Councilmember Foster Bolton. Ms. Falk, please call roll.
Remaley?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
Foster Bolton?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Weersum?
Yes, motion carries. So similarly, but different, our next item is appointments for the Zoning Ordinance Update Work Group, and the process has been similar, but, Mr. Funk?
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. So brief report, because very similar to what we just covered. For tonight's action, again, the staff is looking for your approval to appoint the members as noted in the staff report. Just as a reminder, there, this work group is a little larger than the previous work group that we talked about with dogs. So there is a, part of the work group is staff, and then there will be appointed members that are representing the various boards and commissions of the city. Again, those are noted, so we'll have a representative from the Economic Development Advisory Commission, the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission, the Park Board, Planning Commission, Senior Advisory Board, Sustainability Commission, and then there are two at-large members of the community. Just like I'd noted with the Dog Work Group, the city did advertise and promote for solicitation of those interested from the public in serving on this work group. The city received eight applications, just like with the previous work group. Those were provided to the city council. You had reviewed those and provided feedback to the mayor, and those two names are noted as the at-large members. And then the other thing we'll need to discuss here this evening is there, it's being recommended that the mayor would participate and one council member. And I think the mayor will address that here in a minute, and I think for tonight's purposes, looking to at least approve the names as noted. And then I think Mayor Weersum will be discussing a process for, for selecting a council member that would also serve on this committee.
Right, and thank you, Mr. Funk. On that, on that issue, today I received expressions of interest from two council members, but I haven't solicit, I didn't solicit them, they, they volunteered, and, you know, so I want to, so my thinking is that we're not going to make a decision on the fly, but any council members who are interested in that seat, sitting on this group, please let me know or let Mr. Funk know. Then I would like to speak to each of you individually, and then I get to, lucky me, I get to make a decision among however, however many people expressed, but I just want to give everybody a fair chance to participate, and then, you know, I get to, get to be solemn, and lucky me, but that comes with the territory. So just, I would say, let's, so my recommendation is, let's vote on the names here, then let Mr. Funk either know now, either know now or in the next 24 hours, if you're interested in this, then I will reach out to each of you, have a conversation, and, and we'll get a decision made here in the next few days. Does that work for everyone? Councilmember Coakley?
I have a comment or a question, and I know I'm kind of beating a dead horse, but I need to do it, because when I get bothered by something, I like to address it quickly. But I'm still, like, feeling, feeling a little frustrated with, when we did the DEI, I asked to serve on the DEI, and I continued to see council members, mayor, to be placed on different boards or small committees, and I really wanted to be on a DEI committee, and I was not able to serve on that committee, and I see this happening over and over, and so I, I'm just trying to figure out why, was it done that way? And then we have these other committees, whether this is for short term, long term, but we put council members on these other committees. I, I, I think that's, to me, it's unfair, the way we, the way this keeps happening to me. So I just feel like we need to have a better process or something.
You know, a couple of comments, but I'm going to, I'm going to ask Mr. Funk for his comments, but you've talked about DEI, and you weren't selected. Then you said it's happened over and over. Do you have other examples where it's happened?
Well, I'm talking about how this committee, where we're getting ready to add a council member on this committee. We've done it in the past where council members served on a committee or a small group, and so that's what I'm talking about.
Well, I, I don't understand your point.
I gave you the point, what I was stating. I just gave you the point. Why is it that we're, why isn't it, we're able to do that for this group, and we wasn't able to do for the DEI group? That's the point. So I'm asking, why are we doing that?
Well, I think, you know, it's a different time. We had a different city manager then. It was, that was much more an ad hoc group, and I'm, I mean, that's, as far as I'm concerned, that's-
What?
That's unintended, but, but anyway, you know, I think this is what we're doing now for this process. If you want to talk to me separately, or talk to staff separately about your satisfaction or dissatisfaction about things that have been done in the past, you're welcome to do that, but it's really not relevant to what we're doing here. You're a council member, you can express interest and be considered.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes. Councilmember Calvert?
So if I, I'm, I may be misremembering, but Councilmember Coakley, I believe you were on the task force, so that was similar to what this is. So you were on the task force, and it was decided that on the permanent body, that wasn't a position. So you were on a similar task force. You weren't prohibited, you were selected, and you served. Am I misremembering?
No, that's, that is true, but when the, the final committee or board was created, I had asked if I could serve on that, and then it was decided, because there were folks who didn't want the mayor, or they didn't want the mayor to be on that committee, so then we both had to come off that committee. So that's what happened.
So, you know, just in my mind, this, this is a work, this is a work group, it's not a permanent body. And so, just like you served on that work group, this is a work group that benefits from having someone who does understand how the city works, because we're, you know, making a huge change to the rules that we legislate by. So to, to be without council representation seems, you know, ill-advised. So it makes sense to me on this, because this is literally like the legislative, this is our, you know, the rules that we live by, the whole city, that, that we legislate by. So to me, it makes sense that there is a council member here, and you did serve on the work group for, and, and helped form the wonderful DEI commission that we have now because of the work that you did. So I don't think that there's going to be a permanent, you know, there's not going to be a permanent zoning body other than us. So, you know, we're already, we're already doing it up, up here, because we, we vote on ordinances and changes to our zoning as council members.
So Councilmember Coakley, I appreciate your, sharing your perspective, and you can vote however you want to on this. That's, that is your right as a council member, but I'm looking for a motion on this, on the, on the people that are listed, and then we'll, we'll take it from there, and then if people are interested in serving on this, please contact me, and I'll, we'll set up a meeting and talk it over. So is there a motion from anyone? Oh, Mike?
Oh, thank you, Mayor and Council. I just, just added some additional context. I think first off, as mayor and council, you decide on all of these boards and commissions what the membership looks like. And so I would maybe classify it in two different categories. One is boards and commissions, our permanent, excuse me, our, our permanent boards and commissions. So earlier this evening, you heard from our, our boards and commission members. Those are all, again, created by ordinance, and when you look at our various boards and commissions, none of those, with the exception of the EDAC, have like a council liaison. So with the DEI commission, that was done by ordinance. You as a council spent numerous study sessions talking about the composition and makeup of that body, and you decide as a council, given its current ordinance. So there is not council representation on the DEI commission. That is correct. And I would say that's true, again, of all the other boards and commissions, whether it's Planning Commission, the Park Board, the Sustainability Commission, all those currently do not have a liaison, again, with the exception to the Economic Development Advisory Commission. Ms. Wischnack is a historian of the city, and she can probably give you information as to why that was done. I, I don't, I remember, I don't remember why, but there's a reason why that happened.
It was about financial issues of the city. You know, that there was some continuity between budgeting and finances and that commission.
So with our permanent boards and commissions, that's the, that's kind of one category. The other category are like these work groups. And so I think, as noted by Councilmember Calvert, my familiarity with the most recent work group was the DEI Task Force, and that's where we did have mayor and, and councilmember Coakley was a representative to that. Since that DEI Task Force, we have not had another kind of standing committee, except for the two that are in front of you. And so those are standing, which means they're not permanent.
Ad hoc.
What's that?
Ad hoc.
Ad hoc. And so, thank you. And so with those, again, those are council, those are council decisions on what that composition looks like. For the Dog Work Group, staff recommended, because based on our consultant that's using to facilitate these conversations, the consultant did not recommend having a mayor or council representative, just given the dynamics and the conversation. So staff recommended that, and I think you, council, concurred with that. As it relates to this action regarding the zone, zoning, task, zoning work group, we as staff are recommending you have a mayor and council appointment, just given the depth of the conversation and the potential impacts that this change will have on the city. So just having the experience and knowledge of a council, mayor and council member on that is what staff is recommending. So if you want to change that, council, that's, that's the number of attendees, the number of, there's no magic in all this, other than staff has recommended, based on our experience and based on what kind of outcomes we're looking for in this, is having representation as noted in the staff report. So I think as the mayor mentioned, if there is council interested in serving on the zoning committee, I think just indicates so, and then we'll, we'll work with the mayor on fine tuning who that person is, that council member is, and bring that back at a future meeting. So hopefully that helps kind of clarify the, the differences between those. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Funk. Are there any other comments or questions, anyone? So would somebody like to make a motion? Somebody who's want to. Councilmember Foster Bolton?
I make a motion to approve all appointments noted in the supplemental background report and to the other council member, to be determined.
Thank you. And is there a second? Councilmember Bert Calvert?
Thank you, Mayor. A second.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Foster Bolton and a second by Councilmember Calvert. Ms. Falk, please call roll.
Remaley?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
Foster Bolton?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Weersum?
Yes, motion carries. And this has been a robust appointments and reappointments section, but item 15D is Planning Commission Appointment and Reappointments, and Mr. Funk, one more time.
Excuse me, thank you, Mayor and Council. So this is in, in response to the study session last Monday, where we did, you as a council interviewed four potential candidates to be appointed to the Minnetoka Planning Commission. The council provided feedback, and based on those interviews, provided that to Mayor Weersum, and what is being recommended this evening is for Scott Brink to be appointed to the Planning Commission to serve a two-year term effective February 1st, 2025, and expiring on January 31st, 2027.
Thank you, council. Any comments or a motion? Councilmember Calvert?
First of all, I just want to say, what an embarrassment of riches. Those were really excellent candidates, and it was a tough choice. So it's such a great problem to have, and I just want to thank, I don't think they're listening, but I just want to thank them for, for applying and interviewing, because it was, it was fascinating, and I hope we can engage these people some other way, because they're wonderful. And I would like to make a, a motion to approve the appointment of Scott Brink as the new Planning Commissioner and reappointments to the Minnetoka Planning Commission.
And is there a second? Councilmember Wilburn?
Second.
All right, and, and I just want to make a similar comment to what Councilmember Calvert said. You know, it was, it's really nice when you sit down and you, I mean, you've got four interviews, and you couldn't make a mistake. I mean, that was, that was really a nice set of circumstances. So anyway, so we've got a- a nice set of circumstances. So anyway, so we've got a motion by Councilmember Calvert and a second by Councilmember Wilburn. Ms. Falk, please call roll.
Remaley?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
Foster Bolton?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Weersom?
Yes. Motion carries. Let's see, final item in this agenda is adjournment. Councilmember Wilburn?
I move adjournment.
Is there a second? Councilmember Remaley?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Wilburn, a second by Councilmember Remaley. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. But, don't go away. We have an EDA meeting, but I'm confident we can still be done by nine o'clock with the EDA meeting. So it is January, it is Monday, January 13, 2025, my father's 99th birthday. But he's no longer with us. But anyway, and this is a meeting of the City of Minnetoka Economic Development Authority. I will call this meeting to order and ask Ms. Falk to call roll.
Here.
Coakley?
Here.
Foster Bolton?
Here.
Shaq?
Here.
Wilburn?
Here.
Calvert?
Here.
Weersom?
Here. Next item is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion? Commissioner Wilburn?
I move approval of the agenda.
Commissioner Calvert?
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Wilburn and a second by Commissioner Calvert. Ms. Falk, please call roll.
Remaley?
Here. I mean, yes.
All good.
One of those.
Coakley?
Yes.
Foster Bolton?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Weersom?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item is approval of minutes, and we have the December 2, 2024 EDA meeting minutes. Is there a, Commissioner Calvert?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move approval of the December 2 EDA meeting minutes.
And is there a second? Commissioner Foster Bolton?
I second.
All right. We've got a motion by Commissioner Calvert and a second by Commissioner Foster Bolton. Ms. Falk, please call roll.
Remaley?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
Foster Bolton?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Weersom?
Yes. Motion carries. Item 5 is business items, and 5A is the 2025 election of EDA officers. Ms. Wischnack?
Thank you, President and Commissioners. That is one of the problems that we have to correct in the bylaws. I believe the, there is a statement that says the mayor can cancel meetings. It actually has to say the president can cancel a meeting. So there's a minor change to that, as well as, just to remind you of the composition of the EDA. So you have a president, a vice president, secretary, treasurer, and assistant treasurer. So the president is who is the mayor. So that's predetermined. Vice president will be the acting mayor, which you also adopted tonight. So we have that position. The treasurer will be a commissioner elected annually by the board, so that needs to be done. And then the assistant treasurer is the finance director, who performs the actual duties. Then the secretary is the city clerk, so that position is filled. And the executive director is city manager funk. So really, just have to deal with the treasurers and then confirm all the election of officers.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Wischnack. So the question I have for council is, would somebody like to be designated the treasurer? And I don't believe it can be Commissioner or Commissioner Wilburn or the, or the president. So we've got five people, one treasurer. Who would like to be doing? Commissioner Calvert?
Sure.
All right. With some, well, that, that sounds good. How does that sound to the council? Commissioner, Commissioner Calvert as treasurer? Okay. So we'll make that nomination. And then we will, let's see. So the next thing would be to, a motion to amend the bylaws.
Let's add officers.
And then, should we, can we do that in one motion?
Sure.
All right. So let us, I need a motion to amend the EDA bylaws to change the representation from mayor to EDA president, and then nominate for 2025, the mayor Brad Weersom to be the EDA president, the acting mayor Kimberly Wilburn, Dr. Kimberly Wilburn, to be the EDA vice president, and Commissioner Calvert to be the EDA secretary. So if someone would like...
Treasurer.
Treasurer. Excuse me, I misspoke. All right. So that, that's proposed. Would someone like, now, can I make that motion? I'll make that motion. Is there a second? Commissioner Calvert?
I'll second.
All right. The president made the motion, and the soon-to-be treasurer made the second. Ms. Falk, please call roll.
Remaley?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
Foster Bolton?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
Weersom?
Yes. Motion carries. So the final item is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn? Commissioner Wilburn?
I move adjournment.
And is there a second? Commissioner Remaley?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.